Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I would like to call this Monday, April 11th, 2022, Meeting of the Bloomington City Council to Order. Great to see the council chambers packed once again this evening with smiling faces. Welcome to everyone and welcome to everyone watching online. We start our meeting as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to turn it over to our Deputy Chief, Jeff Giles, as we bring in the colors for this evening.
Please stand for the presentation of the colors. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, united in the free, just, and equal. Order, armed.
Thank you so very much to our Bloomington color guard. What a great way to start our meeting this evening, and anytime they are with us, it's always wonderful. Once again, welcome to everyone here in the chambers. Welcome to the folks watching at home. We have a full agenda this evening, including the swearing-in of our new police chief, and we'll get to that in just a moment. We have to get through some technical stuff first, including a roll call of the council members. Mr. Brillard, if you could, please.
Councilmember Coulter.
Present.
Councilmember Carter.
Present.
Councilmember Lowman.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Present.
Mayor Bussey.
Present.
Let the record show, all seven members of the Bloomington City Council are in attendance this evening. First up on our agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda. In our introductory items, in addition to the swearing-in of our new police chief Booker Hodges, we have a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week and Volunteer Recognition Week. We're going to have an update on our Veterans Memorial, which we're looking forward to hearing, and our 2020 Assessment Report. We've got our consent business, and under our hearings and ordinances, number five, or excuse me, number four, we have four public hearings. A public hearing on the Louisiana Avenue Traffic Calming Project, our Residential Livability Ordinance, our Annual Miscellaneous Issues Ordinances, and Earned Sick and Safe Leave Ordinance. Council, are there any proposed changes to our agenda? Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. I know a number of folks have been interested in the Earned Sick and Safe Leave Ordinance, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn when I suggest that there might be more interest in that than traffic calming, residential livability, or miscellaneous issues. So I would like to suggest that we move that to the top of our public hearings, so that item 4.4 is the first item we take up under hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. So I will make that motion.
We have a motion to move item 4.4 to the top of our Item 4, our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances.
Second, man.
And we have a second to move the public hearing, Item 4.4, to the top. Council, any further discussion on that? Are there any additional changes to the agenda? Hearing none. We have a motion to move Item 4.4 to Item 4.1 and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. With those changes, we have an agended amended, amended, agended amended. We have an amended agenda, and I would move approval of our agenda as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda as amended. Hearing no further council discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. We have an agenda. Item two on our agenda is the introductory items, and Item 2.1 is the swearing-in of our police chief Booker T. Hodges. This is an exciting time, an exciting night for the city of Bloomington, an exciting time, I know, for Chief Hodges and for his family and for the department. It's an exciting time for me, as it's the first time that I will be seeing a new chief sworn in in the city of Bloomington, and I'm hoping it will be the last time I see a new chief sworn in at the city of Bloomington. I'm banking on that as well, and so, very excited. And if there was any doubt about the choice of Chief Hodges as our chief, I don't know how many people I spoke to at the reception earlier who said, "What an outstanding choice. You guys are so lucky. He is an outstanding chief, an outstanding leader, an outstanding police officer, and an outstanding man." I think we knew that all along, but boy, it sure is nice to have that affirmation, to know that moving forward, that our new police chief is going to be so outstanding. We're really looking forward to having you onboard. Before we get to the swearing-in, we do have a couple of folks who wish to speak, and the man who led the search for our new police chief was our city manager, Jamie Verbrugge. I do want to commend you for an outstanding search that produced outstanding candidates, and it was a solid search, and included members of the community, members of the staff, and it was just a strong and solid search, and I think, as I said, we've come up with an outstanding candidate. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Good evening, and good evening to everybody who's here tonight. Just wanted to provide a little bit of background on our process. Identifying leaders in law enforcement who are willing to take on these crucial jobs, especially in today's environment, is challenging, and we made a concerted effort to make sure that we got the very best candidate possible for what we feel is the best police department in the state of Minnesota. We had a national search, and we had an outstanding pool of candidates. Our chosen candidate was able to make it through some withering process, a first-round interview with a couple of different panels that was mostly staff with a couple of outside law enforcement experts, then also had to meet in the finalist round with a couple panels of our executive leadership team and members of our police leadership, as well as some representatives of the city council, members of our community, including the superintendent, a representative of the faith community, a representative of the nonprofit community here in the city of Bloomington. And I will share with each of you, and I'm sure for most of you unsurprisingly, that it was universal that we had an outstanding candidate in Dr. Booker T. Hodges. This is also a two-way process, and at the same time that we were interviewing Dr. Hodges for this potential, we knew very well that he was interviewing us. Dr. Hodges is a man of tremendous experience. He's incredibly knowledgeable. He's highly educated. He's a lifelong learner, and he wanted to make sure that the place that he was going to was going to be a match for his values and for a place where he could exercise his form of leadership in the way that he wanted to be able to do. And I will tell you that that form of leadership is one that matches very well with the organizational culture here. We were very impressed that Dr. Hodges had a plan when he came into the interviews that was able to be very clear about what his steps would be coming in, and that is leading a values-based organization. It starts with values, and I really appreciated not only hearing that from Dr. Hodges as a candidate, but also seeing how he has put it into action in the first week that he's been here. So it is a pleasure for me to be able to say that I'm going to stop calling him Dr. Hodges now, and I get to call him Chief Hodges. Last week, we had his formal swearing-in, so he could actually exercise his authority as a law enforcement officer here in the city of Bloomington. And so this evening's swearing-in is ceremonial, but it is extremely important for our community. One of the values that we have as an organization and as a leadership for the city is that everyone in the city of Bloomington is able to see themselves in this community. And I think that Chief Hodges shares that viewpoint, that members of our community expect and want to be seen, and they want to see people like them working on their behalf. And so I am really excited that we get to introduce Chief Booker T. Hodges to lead the Bloomington Police Department. Chief, would you come forward? And City Clerk? City Clerk Christina Scipione will do the swearing-in, and then when the swearing is done, before we give Chief Hodges a chance to say a few words, I'd like to invite his most immediate supervisor before coming here, and that's our Commissioner of Public Safety at the State of Minnesota, John Harrington, will come up and say a few words, too, and then we'll let Chief Hodges say his piece.
And before we get started here, we always encourage people with the swearing-ins, this is going to happen once, get the best picture possible. Come on up, stand up, do not be shy, come up to the front, do not be shy, and you can stand right in front of us if you need to, but get the best picture possible.
So I gotta suck my stomach?
You do. You do.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Booker T. Hodges.
I, Booker T. Hodges.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
As the police chief for the city of Bloomington, Minnesota.
As the police chief for the city of Bloomington, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
Commissioner Harrington, if you would, and we'll give Booker a chance to catch his breath.
Booker, I will keep my comments academically brief. I come tonight to say thank you. I want to say thank you to the city of Bloomington, because this young man, who I see as very much like a son, has moved to the best place for him, and I encouraged him to, as I knew he wanted to go back into the cop business. Commissioner business is okay, but being a cop is where his heart, and where his soul, and where his love for community is shown the most dramatically. And so I knew he was going to go back. I knew I was going to see him in a uniform, and I knew I was going to see him with stars on his collar, and I could not be prouder of this young man. Quite literally, seeing you today takes my breath away. I want to say thank you, though, to you. I want you to understand how thankful I am for you. You left good jobs, and I asked you to do oftentimes the absolute impossible, and you made it look easy. Whether it was taking care of the homeless, I can remember, we had bags of socks and clothing stacked up in the Department of Public Safety, and no one had ever seen the Department of Public Safety reach out to the community the way this young man has. When the fires raised in Minneapolis, and I needed someone to go in and be the grown-up, to take control, to take command, to lead, and lead in uncertain waters, uncharted waters, waters we had never seen before, I asked this young man to do it, and he stepped forward with courage, with grace, and with decisiveness, and within, literally within days of him taking command, we were seeing skies where dark clouds and fire had been just before. From the biggest picture items to the littlest person on the street. He knows who he is, and he knows whose he is. He's a man of integrity, a man of courage, and a man of honor, and so I brought this picture. It says, "My life came through my ancestors who stand guard over the future, which came through me. Today, I reflect this beautiful continuity of life, and I say to you, Chief Hodges, thank you."
Man, I can't cry the first day on the job. Thank you, Commissioner Harrington. Is it my turn, Mr. Mayor? I don't want to come out.
It is your turn.
All right. Man, you threw me off. It's always hard to speak after Commissioner Harrington. So Mayor, council members, and everybody here, I just really want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, being here. This is an opportunity that I'm grateful for. So I'm going to keep my remarks brief, because I know you all want to get to some food, because we had a little bit of food in there, but you know, first off, I want to thank all the Bloomington police officers that are here. Please, come up here. And the public should know, I mean, they've been nothing but welcoming to me this last week, and I mean, really, it's really hard to put into words how much they've meant to me over the last week. And obviously, I got my wife, and my two kids, my youngest. He looks like he's about to fall asleep, so I'm gonna get this underway real quick. So the mere fact that I'm here before you is a true testament to the power of belief. I grew up in a poor household where there was love and abuse. I grew up in a neighborhood where we believed making it to the age 18 was the end of our lives, because none of us were expected to live past that if we were to believe what we saw on TV. I personally never believed that. The Lord blessed me by sending people into my life who believed in me. He put people in my life who didn't feel sorry for me. He put people in my life who really thought that I could do something. Having people around me who believed in me helped me believe in humanity. I mean, a camp counselor who believed so much in an eight-year-old kid that he gave him a job cutting branches with a chainsaw. I was that eight-year-old kid. A grandmother who believed in a 12-year-old to make a decision where his mother, who had just lost her life as a result of domestic violence, was to be buried. I was that 12-year-old kid. A college professor who wouldn't change the grade for a failing and soon-to-be academically suspended college student who was the hope of their family because the professor believed the student who read at a fourth-grade reading level would overcome this and have a success story to tell. I was that college student. A chief of police and sheriff who believed a former community activist would make a good police officer when no one else gave the activist a chance. I was that activist. A god who believed in a very imperfect person enough to trust him with a compassionate, smart, supportive spouse and two wonderful sons. I am that imperfect person. A city is now believing in a person who represents many historic firsts to lead and inspire a group of dedicated public servants who work in the most noble profession in our country during one of the most challenging times in modern history. I am that person, and your Bloomington police officers are those public servants. As I believe in these public servants, I believe these public servants represent the very best in society. I believe these public servants can overcome anything, and when I say anything, I mean anything. Why do I believe they can accomplish this? Because God gives His hardest assignments and toughest exams to His best students. And I want you to think about that for a second. I believe He has given us all the tests right now to see if we can come back to the foundation of our shared humanity. I believe we will pass this exam by living out our humanity, and we can do this by believing in our shared humanity. I believe in us, I believe in you and I, and I believe in the women and men He has blessed me to lead and work alongside. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And I mentioned the number of people who I spoke to earlier, and I will tell you what a small town we live in. After Mass yesterday, as I was coming out, a fellow parishioner at St. Thomas the Apostle in Linden Hills in Minneapolis stopped me and said, "Your new police chief was a student of mine in fourth grade, and you have an outstanding police chief. And if you can get the endorsement of your fourth-grade teacher, I think you're in a good spot." So, welcome aboard. Thank you so very much, and we're so excited to have you here with us. Thank you. Now, I know there is still food left, reception left. We do have a couple of proclamations that if you would be willing to stick around, I would greatly appreciate it, because they are related to the work that you are doing and the work that you are here supporting this evening. And I'm going to come down to the podium and read the proclamations. If you could just wait for us to get through these proclamations and then head to the finished reception, we greatly appreciate it, so. Item 2.2 on our agenda is a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and I think I mentioned earlier, the telecommunications here in Bloomington and everywhere in public safety are the first and most vital link in our city's public safety apparatus. And they provide a single, vital, important link in monitoring the police officers, the firefighters, the folks that we count on to keep us safe, they work to keep them safe. And this proclamation recognizes that, and again, thank you for sticking around and showing your appreciation to the folks who do this every day. It's a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 10th through the 16th, 2022. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require emergency services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of first responders is critical to the protection of life and the preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the city of Bloomington Emergency Communication Center. And whereas the public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. Whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities, providing information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunications of the city of Bloomington have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and care of patients. And whereas in 2021, the city of Bloomington Police Department staffed eight telecommunications who worked as a team to handle 166,408 phone calls and who entered 64,904 computer-aided dispatch events. And whereas each dispatcher, each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in this past very, very difficult year. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussey, the city of Bloomington, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim the week of April 10th through the 16th, 2022, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Bloomington in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and our citizens safe. Signed this day, the 11th of April, 2022. I know we have a couple of members of our dispatch team here. Come on up, please, where are you? Come on up. We could? There they are. I lost you.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Thank you. Did you want to say anything? Please.
So our dispatchers are kind of behind the scenes, so they don't want to speak, so I'm not going to embarrass them, because I like people answering the phone when you dial 911. But our telecommunications are the glue that holds the public safety system together. Ultimately, at the end of the day, when we all dial 911, they're going to be the ones that answers the phone. Without them, a lot of people wouldn't get the emergency services that they need, and they work tirelessly throughout the city, every single day, 24 hours, 365 days a year. And like the mayor said, on the behalf of the city of Bloomington, I really thank you. I've had an opportunity to be in there for doing what you do, and this week isn't enough, but we appreciate everything you've done, and we will continue to eat your doughnuts all week in the dispatch center, so thank you.
And I mentioned that both of our proclamations tonight actually do contribute to public safety in the city of Bloomington, and this one is for Volunteer Recognition Week. And I know we have some volunteers, I don't even know how many folks we have here, but all the volunteers, both in public safety and other parts of the city of Bloomington, if you wanted to come up as well right now, don't be shy. Please, there they are. Come on up. Come on. It's a better camera shot. We have volunteers here from the police department, including reserve officers, chaplains, and the multicultural advisory committee. They're here to accept the proclamation, and we're so glad to have them here. The city currently has more than 1,000 volunteers, and each volunteer, for some reason and somehow they put a market value on our volunteers, they have a market value of $28.54, which is great. I mean, I would say they're priceless, because the things that we do here, we could not do within the city of Bloomington without our volunteers, and so we are so, so very grateful. And actually, this year, on Saturday, April 23rd, we're going to have a cross-departmental team, including staff from the police department, community development, public works, park and rec, and community services. They planned a volunteer appreciation open house. It's going to be right here in City Hall, Saturday morning, April 23rd. Please do join us. It's going to be a celebration for the folks who absolutely deserve it. City of Bloomington proclamation for Volunteer Recognition Week, April 17th through the 23rd, 2022. Whereas volunteers come from different walks of life and shape our city with their tremendous concerns and generosity. And whereas we all thrive when everyone is involved and applaud the efforts from nonprofit, faith-based, military service, and community organizations that have stepped forward to advance the city's mission. And whereas throughout this period of hope, we've seen reserve officers donate hundreds of hours of service and assist at every large public event in the city. We've seen conservationists clean up miles of invasive species in our parks. Medical and emergency personnel volunteer. the arts here in the Center for the Arts. And whereas during this week, we would like to thank the city's robust group of approximately 1,000 volunteers and invite others, every one of you, to join their ranks. to go in there and finish up all the cookies and goodies. Thank you so very much for being part of our council meeting tonight. Therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim the week of April 17th through the It made it really special. Thank you so very much to all the law enforcement that were here. So. 23rd, 2022, as Volunteer Recognition Week in the City of Bloomington, signed this date, Hey. You want to just take a picture? Yes. 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 the 11th of April, 2022. Yes. 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 I'm out of superlatives to thank you both. Yes. 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 Your work is so greatly appreciated, and as I said, whatever monetary value we put on Yes. 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 it, we can't because the work you do is priceless. Yes. Yes. So, thank you all so very much. Yes. Greatly appreciated. Yes. Welcome. Yes. Thank you. Yes. Did we get all the pictures? Yes. 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 Did we need one? Yes. A good one? Yes.
Get a good one, everyone together.
Yes. Okay, everybody to get together, and here's our photographer. Yes. 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 Yeah. Yes. Come on in, don't be shy. Yes. Yes. Here we go. Yes. Yes. You're good. Yes. Yes. Okay. Yes. 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 Yes.[764.32][764.32][S02. Well, I could have requested that they stick around for all of your items as well, but I didn't think we'd, we decided to move them on. Thank you all for your patience. We will move on in our agenda to item 2.4, which is an update on the Veterans Memorial here in the City of Bloomington. I'm sure folks watching and folks here in the chambers, I hope you know that Bloomington Remembers Veterans is working to construct a veterans memorial here on the grounds of the Civic Plaza. We have Terry Collins and Dwayne Brinkman from the Board of Directors from Bloomington Remembers Veterans. Good evening, gentlemen, and welcome. The floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and all in attendance. Sort of went downhill a little bit, but okay. My name is Terry Collins, and I do have the honor and privilege of being president of Bloomington Remembers Veterans. Joining me tonight is Dwayne Brinkman. He's our treasurer, and I want to thank you again for this opportunity to provide an update on the fundraising for the Bloomington Veterans Memorial. The cost of this memorial is going to be $750,000. I'm going to turn it over to Dwayne for more.
Next slide, please. Is there a clicker here?
If we could, are we looking for the video now or?
No, not yet.
No, not yet. Hold on to the video. Hold on.
Hold on to the video. Here, here you go. Let that do it.
Okay. Thank you, Terry. This project is being led by the Bloomington Remembers Veterans, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit established in...
Could, I'm sorry, thank you. If we could just get you into the microphone, I think we're having trouble hearing people.
That'll work better.
Much better.
We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that was established in 2018. The board consists of nine members, seven are veterans, and you'll see the asterisk on the slide indicates the veterans on the board. In addition to the organization, we have an additional 10 individuals supporting the organization as volunteers and advisors. In May, we will be expanding the board from nine members to 12. Next, we'll show you a promotional video that was put together by Leo A. Daley, the design team for the memorial. This provides a good overview of the goals and design of the memorial.
Every veteran has a story. Veterans have had a profound impact on the world we live in. From the Civil War to contemporary operations around the globe, to service on the home front, the time has come for veterans to have a memorial in Bloomington to honor, remember, and share their stories.
The Bloomington Veterans Memorial will be located on the east lawn of the Civic Plaza.
The memorial is conceived as a sequence of experiences arranged along a path with embedded symbolism, distinct programmatic elements, and the capacity to host groups and individuals of all ages in a process of learning, honoring, and reflection. As a visitor enters the memorial, the landscape reveals two parallel paths towards the south and the flag beyond.
Two symbolic walking paths, one for the veteran and the other for the family.
Six threads representing the six branches of the armed forces form a structure embedded into a landscape of plantings native to Minnesota. This interconnected sculptural element is a visible extension of the flagpole and forms an armature for storytelling where it emerges from the landscape. Each veteran's story and the sacrifices of each veteran's family is directly tied to the symbol of the American ideal, the flag, and the freedoms we have as Americans.
Individual recognition will be provided through symbolic dog tags hanging from the armatures.
Tags move with the passage of time, wind, and seasons, like leaves on this natural site, and carry the stories of veterans connected in their collective service to the country. Six illuminated stone benches are set alongside the path of service, each configured around a seal of one of the branches of the military, arranged in the order of their founding. The paths of service and support converge in a small plaza around the flagpole, a place of homecoming, where veterans and their loved ones are reunited in body and spirit. The flag is the centerpiece of the memorial, the backdrop for community activities and gatherings, and the visible connection to the stories of Bloomington's veterans. Along with the ability to host outdoor events, this proposal integrates places for quiet reflection and remembrance. At the terminus of the paths is a symbolic light that reflects the spirit of both of those who serve and those who support.
The memorial will not only honor and pay tribute to the service members and their families, but be a place to aid in the healing of those who have borne the full burden of service.
We are seeking your support in this endeavor, whether by volunteering or assisting in the fundraising efforts.
Help us to build the Bloomington Veterans Memorial.
Your investment will tell veterans, both living and deceased, we see you, we care about you, and we honor you. Please visit our website for details on how to get involved.
We had a robust media campaign take place last fall. It included radio, television, and print interviews. A special thank you to Mayor Bussie for his mention of the memorial in his State of the City address. In addition, a number of presentations have been made to community groups and organizations, including the Optimists, Vikings Men's Club, Fleet Reserve, Country Music Jam, and most recently, the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. We have also established our website and Facebook page with regular updates and information. Our fundraising efforts have included a grant from the Bloomington Community Foundation. The board has also contracted with a professional grant writer who will be working to identify and apply for additional grant funding sources. Two of these opportunities include the Minnesota Legacy Grant and the Veterans Memorial Grant, which we'll touch bases on just in a little bit. We've been able to correct, I'm sorry, we have been able to create some strong partnerships through our media efforts and relationships established by our board and volunteers. The Bloomington Chamber of Commerce is extremely supportive of our project and has provided opportunities to share at a networking event, board meeting, State of the City, and the upcoming town talk on May 5th. We have also been working with the staff from the Minnesota Department of the American Legion, with our local American Legion and VFW post as well. We appreciate their support, both financially and for their, also for their promotion. I'll now turn things over to Terry, who will share with you the planning and what we've got going forward.
Thank you, Dwayne. At our April 6th board meeting, recognition amounts were selected for donations for the Those amounts are shown on the screens in front of you. While we are finalizing where they will be incorporated into the memorial with the architects, donors will be recognized at these levels. Based on our research, this is similar to other memorials in the state of Minnesota. In addition to, a special recognition will be created for donations above $50,000. This recognition will include in-kind donations as well. Also at our April 6th meeting, the approval for the symbolic dog tags, which was used to recognize veterans, will also include a QR code where additional detail about the veterans and their experiences will be assessed, accessed, excuse me. The purchase of the dog tags will be available soon. The cost will be $350 each. There's space on the memorial for 1,000 to 1,200 of these tags. Tags will be free of charge for those veterans who were missing in action, prisoners of war or killed in action. The American Legion Post 550 will provide funding for those veterans. State funding. We had a preliminary discussion in January with Senator Melissa Wicklin, the Minnesota Department of Veterans Affairs, Commissioner and Legislative Director, in addition to Mayor Bussie and Councilman Bloman. There was an interest in supporting this effort, however, due to late awareness on our part, it was not possible for 2022. We will continue to work to be included in their request for either bonding or budget appropriations for 2023. We will be applying for 2023 and including a request to the city for matching funds, which is highly recommended for the Legacy Grant and required for the Veterans Memorial Ways that you can support us. This is our ask of support. We need a letter of support from the council, either individually or collectively. We'd love to have you sign a letter of support. We received one previously from counsel, former council member Beloka. Donations of funds to match our Legacy and Veterans Memorial grant applications. We are still determining our ask, and we'll be coming back to you with that request and noting additional assistance if needed. We need a champion or champions to help guide us through that process with the state for bonding or for budget appropriation. And then lastly, we have expanded our board and would value participation by a council member if possible. We do totally understand that the role may be limited by what is permissible for elected On behalf of Bloomington Remembers Veterans Incorporated, thank you for this opportunity to provide you with an update on our progress. We have met with several of you already and greatly appreciate your advice and support. At this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, Mr. Brinkman. I will start with the letter of support. Simple as that. There you go, signed by all seven of us, our council members.
You've got a typewriter behind you.
We do, yes. Just in time service, absolutely.
Well, thank you very, very much.
You're very welcome. You're very welcome. And for your other notions, your other asks of support, frankly, I need a chance to look through it with staff and talk through it. I think the council member representation on the Board of Directors, I think that's a pretty simple one that we can take care of in short order, I would think. And... which we'll touch bases on just a little in a little bit. We've been able to correct, I'm sorry, we have been able to create some strong partnerships through our media efforts and relationships established by our board and volunteers. The Bloomington Chamber of Commerce is extremely supportive of our project and has provided opportunities to share at a networking event, board meeting, State of the City, and the upcoming town talk on May 5th. We have also been working with the staff from the Minnesota Department of the American Legion, with our local American Legion and VFW post as well. We appreciate their support, both financially and for their, also for their promotion. I'll now turn things over to Terry, who will share with you the planning and what we've got going forward.
Thank you, Dwayne. At our April 6th board meeting, recognition amounts were selected for donations for the memorial. Those amounts are shown on the screens in front of you. While we are finalizing where they will be incorporated into the memorial with the architects, donors will be recognized at these levels. Based on our research, this is similar to other memorials in the state of Minnesota. In addition to, a special recognition will be created for donations above $50,000. This recognition will include in-kind donations as well. Also at our April 6th meeting, the approval for the symbolic dog tags, which was used to recognize veterans, will also include a QR code where additional detail about the veterans and their, and their experiences will be assessed, accessed, excuse me. The purchase of the dog tags will be available soon. The cost will be $350 each. There's space on the memorial for 1,000 to 1,200 of these tags. Tags be free of charge for those veterans who were missing in action, prisoners of war, or killed in action. The American Legion Post 550 will provide funding for the, those veterans. State funding. We had a preliminary discussion in January with Senator Melissa Wicklin, the Minnesota Department of Veterans Affairs, Commissioner and Legislative Director, in addition to Mayor Bussie and Councilman Loman. There was an interest in supporting this effort, however, due to late awareness on our part, it was not possible for 2022. We will continue to work to be included in their request for either bonding or budget appropriations for 2023. We'll be applying for 2023 and including a request to the city for matching funds, which is highly recommended for the Legacy Grant and required for the Veterans Memorial Grant. Ways that you can support us. This is our ask of support. We need a letter of support from the council, either individually or collectively. We'd love to have you sign a letter of support. We received one previously from council, former council member Beloka. Donations of funds to match our legacy and Veterans Memorial grant applications. We are still determining our ask, and we'll be coming back to you with that request and noting additional assistance if needed. We need a champion or champions to help guide us through that process with the state for bonding or for budget appropriation. And then lastly, we have expanded our board and would value participation by a council member if possible. We do totally understand that the role may be limited by what is permissible for elected officials. On behalf of Bloomington Members Veterans Incorporated, thank you for this opportunity to provide you with an update on our progress. We have met with several of you already and greatly appreciate your advice and support. At this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, Mr. Brinkman. I will start with the letter of support. Simple as that. There you go, signed by all seven of us, our council members. We do, yes. Just in time service, absolutely.
Well, thank you very, very much.
You're very welcome. You're very welcome. And for your other notions, your other asks of support, frankly, we, I need a chance to look through it with staff and talk through it. I think the council member representation on the Board of Directors, I think that would, that's a pretty simple one that we can, we can take care of in short order, I would think. And as, I mean, as I can commit, as I have done in the past, we'll continue supporting, if you have a bonding request, that we could more than happy work, more than happily work with whoever we need to, to try and make that a possibility and a happening. So, the, the matching funds, again, that's a, I have to talk to, to the money guy first and see if that, if that would work out. But as I have said, and I think every member of this council has said, we are so supportive of this effort, and we will do what we can, how we can, when we can, in an effort to help this out in some way. So, council, do we have questions? Councilmember Loman?
Mayor, I just wanted to just say, it's, it's, I'm glad to see you guys back here again, and for all those folks who are, were not here, and those folks who've been supportive of this, I know that when this initiative started with Vern Wilcox some many years ago, and I want to be sure that we, we don't forget his work, as many of us kind of follow through many councils. I know that Councilmember Carter and Delisato now are going to probably pull this thing forward, and I'm looking forward to, forward to that, because I think it really does take many different councils to really bring this forward, as it's taken many generations to secure freedom. And I am hoping that, that we can get this thing finally in the ground and celebrate those folks who have given so much to our country.
Council, additional comments, questions? We will, we will maintain contact with you as we have and, and talk about the additional three asks of support. And as I said, I can see, we can check some of these boxes pretty quick and easy, I think, for the most part. We do have some details to work out, but we're, we are, we are supportive.
We understand, and thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you. Item 2.5 on our introductory items is our 2022 Assessment Report, and our city assessor, Matt Gershmel, is here. Mr. Gershmel, we've, this has generated a number of questions, comments, and concerns, both through email and online, and frankly, in person, I've had a couple of folks stop me. And so I'm very glad to see you and, and glad that we can get some information out into the hands of folks and try and explain a little bit exactly what's going on with, with these valuations in the city of Bloomington. Mr. Gershmel?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. It has been an interesting, the last couple of years post-pandemic. And so tonight, I will go through a bunch of background information that went into the 2022 Assessment Report. And as you said, I'm Matt Gershmel, I'm the city assessor. So I'm going to focus on four major areas here tonight. One, since we sent out our value notices here in, in March, we have taken about 650 phone calls. Those phone calls this year are, been longer in length, and they've taken about 20 minutes or so to, to talk to folks about what's happening in the market. But, so I'm going to touch on questions. I'm also going to touch on some of the pieces that go into the Minnesota property tax, what my office is actually in, tasked to do. We'll touch a little bit on the, the market, or actually, a lot on the market, and then finally, we'll jump into the assessment results. So, some of the questions that we've gotten, they're really around three major items. One is impact on property taxes. The second one has to do with the market value exclusion. And then the third one is what programs are available for, for property tax deferrals and whatnot. And so the first one, the question that we've got most often, because the city market, the average market value here for a single-family residential is up about 17%, so the question is, is does a 17% increase in my market value mean my taxes will increase 17%? And the short answer is no. And the reason being is that for the 22 Assessment, we saw fairly equal participation among all of the property segments. And so the, I'll jump into the, the actual data later, but when all, all segments are participating and market value increases about 14, 15% like it has this year, the tax rate will automatically decrease. And so the short answer is no, and we'll, we'll touch on that a little bit more. The second question is, why did my homestead market value exclusion decrease so much or went away completely? And the reason behind that is, is the way that the, the benefit is set up is the first $76,000 of market value, 40% of that value is excluded from taxation. So at $76,000, the amount is 30,400. There's a 9% deflator in the law, and that phases out at 413.8. The median value home for the city of Bloomington is about $355,000 now. So every, every dollar above that 76, that deflator happens. And so you might see, if you have a large increase, you're also going to see a large decrease in your market value exclusion. And then thirdly, one of the questions that we got quite a bit is, as somebody on a fixed income, is there a deferral program for property taxes? And the answer is no, but there is a property tax refund program for homeowners and renters. And for, for instance, for last year, the market, the median market value was 307.2. I'm looking right here on this chart, and the property tax amount was just under 38.50 in total. The city of Bloomington has a median income in that 80 to 90,000 range, which could, you could get a refund of a little over $1,000 or about 30% of your property taxes if you file your property tax refund. That filing deadline is August 15th, and you do want to talk to your accountant on this. There is also a refund program for renters that, that is up, that phases out at 34,920. So those are questions we've got. I want to jump into the property tax system itself, and there's really three distinct buckets of, or prongs of, of how property taxes work here in the state of Minnesota. First out of the chute is the market value assessment. That's what our office controls, and that's what I'll talk about a little bit more later. The second piece is the property tax levy. That's the piece that the city council, Hennepin County Commissioners, and the school board all can play a role in. And then the third part is the county auditor, and that's where the, the calculations of property tax come into play. So this process starts in my office, and it starts with us analyzing sales that have occurred. And what's interesting for the 2022 property assessment, the sales that we were looking at were from October of 2020 through September of 2021. COVID did a lot of different things, and one of the things that happened was when it came on in May, or March of 2020, it pushed the spring market from March. We had a lull of March and April as people were sheltering in place and social distancing. There wasn't a whole lot of market activity in the early spring. It pushed the normal spring market into late summer and early fall. And so one of the things that we've realized in analyzing this is we really have two spring markets within our sales study this year, and that's why I believe we have two years of market value increase wrapped up in one year. And so when we look at all those sales and we figure out our time trends, those trends across the city were 12 to 15% market value, or market appreciation. We apply those trends to the January 2nd, 2022 Assessment date. We're required by law to be between 90 and 105% of market value. And so we, that's when we set our values. We mail the notices out in March. The last piece that our office actually handles is property tax appeals. And the, the first step is to, if you think your value is not correct, is to talk to our office. That's what 650 individuals have done so far. And then the second step is to attend two different boards of appeals. The city's local board of appeal is April, that's next week, April 20th. The county board of appeal, if you don't find satisfaction at the local board, meets the last two weeks of June. And then the third is the Minnesota Tax Court. And that filing deadline for 22, for our value for January 2nd, 2022, is actually April 30th in the year that the taxes are due. So that's April 30th of 2023. So you have a long time to file on the Minnesota Tax Court side. So the second piece, which is controlled by, which is the property tax levy, that's controlled by the city, county, and school districts. The city, I understand, is just starting the budgeting process, and you all will set a preliminary levy in September of 2022? It should be noted that barring any other changes within the market value, this is the only way that the city can collect more property taxes. Not by the market values increasing, but through the levy process. That is the only way. Proposed tax statements are sent in November, and then we'll have a public hearing come this early December in 2022. All the levies will be set in December of 22 and, and will be sent to the county auditor for certification. From there, the county auditor will pick it up. They will take all the levies, and they will look at the property tax base, and they will determine a city tax rate. They'll do that for the county, they'll do that for the, the school district. Then what they'll do is they'll take everybody's taxable market value, times all those different rates here for, and that will determine the individual property tax bill. Those will get mailed out in March of 2023 with payments due in May and October of 2023. So that completes the loop on the Minnesota property tax system. The next part we're going to talk about is the market. And a few of the things that I'm going to touch on here is just the challenges of, of what's happening, buyer behavior, some changes there, and we'll touch on some Realtor data and some other market data that all went into the assessment. So the first thing one has to do is just follow the headlines when it comes to what's happening in the real estate. And, and all of these articles are actually out of the Star Tribune, and they're all penned by the same, the same author. But what's interesting to note is, is in March 17th, 2021, here's a headline that says, "Few Houses, Eager Buyers: Rising Prices Into In-Cities." It's just insane. And, and the subnote here is that homes are selling in near-record time as median price hits 314,000. We jump over here one month later, and it talks about the lack of homes for sale in the Twin Cities sends the median sale price to 327.5. The next one, which was penned two months later, talks about the Twin Cities housing market stays strong as median price hits 342.5. So this is, this is, this is happening in Bloomington, this is happening all around the Twin Cities. One other piece here that I've got on here is an article from Feb. 21 that talks about the Twin Cities area has a new hot real estate segment, million-dollar homes. Pandemic generates more upper bracket sales as wealthier buyers hit the market. And what's interesting is just two weeks ago, there was another article that was talking about the bidding wars for million-dollar homes. And that's happening all over the metro, and we actually had a number of million-dollar homes just in Bloomington in the last 12-month sell. So there's also been shifts in homebuyer preferences during the pandemic. So you've got work from home, you've got work from office, in, in some cases, you've got work from anywhere. Our colleagues outside of the Twin Cities, mostly north, are seeing 30 to 40% valuation increases as people are moving and working from an environment outside of the metro. And also distance learning. So folks are looking for additional square footage, they're looking for that square footage for one or two home offices, and in some cases, they're looking for distance learning spaces. So premium being paid for extra square footage is what we've seen in the data. We've also had some online shopping as people were working from home, and there's also been supply chain disruptions. Who remembers the, the Suez Canal and the blockage for a little over a week? And, you know, one thing that's interesting is something that's exploded more than housing prices is the, is the cost of used cars because of the shortage of wafer chips. Used car prices are up 40% during the pandemic. One of the other headwinds is, we all know, the, the cost of lumber has skyrocketed, and this slide up here shows that new home builds, the number one issue in new home builds, 63% is a delay in window orderings. So it's, all of that is driving up home values. And so, so those are all the challenges. I'm going to jump into some Realtor data. So I've, I've been in front of council, I think, the last six or seven years, talking about the supply issue of homes. And on this particular chart, let me set it up. Blue is Bloomington, red is the Twin Cities region. This is the month, the month of supply of homes, and we have been seeing a decrease ever since about 2000, I think it's 15 or 16 of this number. A normal market should have five to six months of supply, and we are down by, you know, 12x, basically. And what does that look like for the city of Bloomington? This is all, this is condos, townhouses, and single-family. There are 54 homes available on the market as we speak, 54. You back out condos and townhouses, 32 across the whole city. The median days on market, again, Bloomington in blue, Twin Cities in red. You can see over the last two years that we've studied, the median day on market is four days. So half of the homes are selling faster than four days, half of them are selling over four days. About two times, and, and really, it's, the Twin Cities metro is averaging a week, so it's not much of a difference, but it is a difference. Percentage of original list price, this one is the doozy. I remember I shared an article with Jamie back in September of 2021, and that article referenced the city of Bloomington hit 102.5% of original list price. At the time, the article said that was the highest in 15 years. We've blown past that. We're averaging 106, 107 in the last couple of marches, and that equates to about a $30,000 to $40,000 purchase price over list. And this, this chart here shows the median showings to pending. So homes are selling in roughly four days for $30,000 to $40,000 over ask, and they've had in the, in 2021, 24 showings, and in 2022, in those four days, about 20 showings. So demand is declining slightly, but we're not out of the woods by any stretch. And here is the median sales price. This tracks actually fairly well with what we're seeing on the assessment side. This is a 12-month rolling average, so this is the last 12 months of, of sales. And you can see that for the city of Bloomington, we're just at 356 on that rolling 12-month average, and that lines up with the median value home at 355.9. So that's where that data goes. This is 12 months. I like to use 12 months rolling average. If I show you the just March data, now this is, keep in mind, there's not a lot of homes on the market, but we're seeing a 23% increase just in March over March sales. Some of that's a product of what's happening, what's available for sale, and we're going to continue to watch it, but that is why I don't quote month to month, because it, it just, it, they can go up and down. So this, these next set of slides that I want to touch on is, they're a little busy, but these are price points. So this far left side is under 200,000. This shows the shift in sales. So in 2022, we had six sales in the whole, in all of city of Bloomington that sold below 200,000. From the 2,000 to 3,000, 300,000 category, only 130 sales. And so you can really see the price shifting starting to happen as you see those sales decline, they're just not available. as you see those sales decline. They're just not available when you hold price constant. In the three to four hundred thousand dollar range, we've seen about a thirty-one percent increase. This is where the new median value lays is in this segment here. Um, but they, what's interesting is we are seeing an explosion of homes above four hundred thousand. Uh, we had a hundred ninety sales transactions just in uh two thousand twenty-two or the last twelve months in the four to five hundred thousand dollar range. And we go a little bit further up the spectrum. Uh, you can see the five to six hundred thousand dollar range. We've had an increase of thirty-five sales transactions. Um, the same in the six to seven fifty, forty-eight homes sold in two thousand twenty-two in that price range. Uh, and then we get into the more of the upper bracket homes, eighteen sales in that seven fifty to a million dollar range. And then what's really interesting is we had ten sales in the last twelve months of over a million dollars here in the city of Bloomington compared to none in two thousand twenty-one or only two in two thousand twenty. This is all said with the backdrop that in the last forty-five days, interest rates have increased a hundred basis points. Um, we're at four point six seven uh percent. Um, it's, it's interesting to note that during the period that we did study this last two years, the interest rates ranged from two eighty-three to three forty-five. Um, what's also interesting is where is interest rates going to go? Probably increases a little bit more, uh, and where it goes from there is anybody's guess. Um, the last time we were this historically low was three forty-four and that's in the mid two thousand sixteen range. Uh, and it peaked out at four eighty-seven in Ju- January of nineteen before it started to fall. All of these interest rates uh should be looked at in comparison to where we were back in oh five, oh six, oh seven, where interest rates were in that six to seven percent. So we're still on the historic low side. Um, but we'll be monitoring it as it goes forward. And those sales, uh, if values change, will be used uh going forward. Just some other market data. Uh, I'm going to switch from single-family residential to multifamily. Uh, this comes from our friends at GVA Marquette. Uh, this is fourth quarter apartment trends. Um, what's interesting on this particular slide is we've built a lot of multifamily housing in this city in the last uh three to four years. We did see a spike in vacancy rate as those, that new supply came on. But we've rented them all out. We're back below three percent again. Uh, and this is fourth quarter twenty twenty uh twenty-one data. So um, rent has stayed fairly flat. Uh, you know, it's up a little bit. Um, it's, we are still less than the Twin Cities average. So dark blue is metro and light blue is uh is Bloomington. And the number one reason as to why we're seeing valuations increases in uh in apartments is because of cap rates. And this chart is actually from CoStar and it shows uh um, cap rates. So this is what investors are willing to pay for uh, for those types of investments. And we, the, if you follow the blue line here, this is uh uh, it had been in the five-eight range and now we are sitting down here in the four point eight range. So we've had a hundred basis points uh dip in the cap rates. Uh, and that is what's fueling the apartment market when it comes to valuation increases. I do want to touch on hotels uh because as last year, as I stood before you, or actually I was at home presenting to you. Uh, we talked about uh hospitality values in the city of Bloomington going down fifteen to uh thirty-five percent. Um, and that's represented by this Feb twenty-one kind of year-over-year data uh where uh, you know, the hospitality industry really took a hit. Uh, happy to report that we've brought some of that value back as the market starts to recover. Uh, what's interesting is uh, so we have occupancy that's in this line that goes this way. Um, we have ADR, which is in the blue color. We have RevPAR, which is revenue. That's what we watch. Um, revenue is not projected to get back to stabilization until uh uh, late twenty-five into twenty-six. What it, what is interesting though is that the average daily rate um, is uh, is back or it's projected to be back in twenty-three and then increasing as we go forward. So that's what we're watching in the hotel side. And this last slide, uh, just I want to touch on industrial because we saw a very large increase in industrial properties. Part of that is online uh uh, online shopping and as we are seeing supply shortages. Um, that just-in-time order delivery uh is actually suffering right now. And there's a lot of uh retailers that are trying to bulk up their warehouse space and have product on hand um, in order to fulfill future orders. Um, what that that has done, uh, if you follow with me on this blue line, this is market rent and this is for the southwest industrial market. That includes the majority of Bloomington west of thirty-five. Um. Rent was about seven dollars a square foot from seventeen all the way into twenty-one. And then now it has increased drastically uh in the last uh two years and projected to increase going forward. Um, the warehouse rent, that is, that is a do- that is a direct driver of why industrial values are increasing. And then uh, so all of that backdrop is what's funneled into our um, assessment report. And uh, I just want to remind folks that, you know, we have expanded our web presence. Um, online now you can go and view all of our property characteristics. You can take a look at uh a number of our assessment reports. And then we also have a lot of hyperlinks to news articles relating to property value. Uh, we've directed residents to to view those and do some research as they've contacted us this year. So to the report, um, this is the uh two thousand twenty-two assessment results. Um, residential value uh is almost, this is condos, townhouses and uh single family all in. We almost hit ten billion dollars in value. It's up about seventeen percent in total. Uh, and uh, without new construction, uh sixteen point nine. Commercial did bounce back. We did see about a seven percent increase in our commercial property value. Um. Six point seven and uh net of new construction, six point one. Industrial, we topped one billion dollars for the first time in our industrial market. It was up eighteen point three percent. Uh, once we back out new construction, about sixteen. And then multifamily apartments, we now have topped two, well, two billion. Uh, it was at one-eight. So we added uh about four hundred million dollars to our apartment assessment. It's up over two point two billion dollars, about a twenty-one percent increase. But we also had a hundred and twenty-six million dollars of new construction. So apartment values are up about fourteen percent net or fifteen net of new construction. So the total city market value is up seventeen point one uh or is up from about just shy of fifteen billion to seventeen point one billion for uh two thousand twenty-two for taxes payable in two thousand twenty-three. This particular chart, as I mentioned, uh, a little bit about the median value home. Uh, that is up uh just shy of sixteen percent from three oh seven-two to three fifty-five-nine. Uh, the five-year change though, when I look at it back to twenty seventeen is up about forty-four point four percent. That's about an eight percent increase per year. Um, and uh, hold on to that nugget, the forty-four point four. One of the things in the assessment report that we break uh that we show and and uh we try to illustrate is we've broken out the city into twenty-nine different districts. Um, and we analyze single-family residential. Uh, we look at property sales all across the city. Uh, we break it out by different styles, ages, size, uh, cross-hatch it a bunch of different ways. And then the, one of the final ones is we look at neighborhoods. I just wanted to highlight a couple of the neighborhoods here. So if we zoom in here to District three eighty-four, this is our Highwood District. Uh, there's six hundred and forty-one homes in this particular district. We had twenty-one sales in the last uh, in the study. The median sale price was five hundred sixty-one thousand. Our two thousand twenty-one value was four hundred and twenty-six thousand three hundred. Our new value for two thousand twenty-two is five twelve. It's an increase of twenty percent. Uh, what's interesting though is half of that increase, so the five-year change is forty percent. Half of that came just this past year. We take a look at uh central Bloomington in our Marsh Lake area. There's nine hundred seventy-four homes. We had forty-six sales. Uh, the median sale price was four hundred and four thousand. And our median value last year was three twenty-eight in this neighborhood. Uh, our new value is three seventy-eight, about a fifteen percent increase. And again, a five-year change of about forty-five percent. We go to southeast Bloomington. This is the Pond Dakota neighborhood. We have four, little under fifteen hundred homes. We had sixty-one sales. The median sale price in this neighborhood was three hundred and seventy-two thousand four hundred. Last year's value was three oh one-one for the neighborhood, our median. And this year's value is three forty-three-five, about a fourteen point one percent increase. And again, a forty-four percent change over the last five years. When we look at all those together, uh, you know, these, the individual neighborhoods went, you know, somewheres between fourteen and twenty percent on a neighborhood level. Uh, and then what's, what's to note though is that each one of them, they got there a little differently. Uh, the last five years are up about forty to forty-five percent. I do want to touch on the Bloomington commercial industrial market as I talked about. Hospitality was up fourteen point two percent. Retail, about seven percent. Office and medical buildings, uh, about one percent. Uh, if you remember January of two thousand and twenty-one, still not a lot of plans of uh folks going back to the office. And so the verdict is still kind of out on office and we'll be watching that. Uh, industrial, it tops that one billion, up seventeen point eight percent. Uh, and then uh, just the total commercial uh assessment was up eight point two percent or commercial and industrial up eight point two, once you blend it all together, just below uh five billion. I like to end all of my presentations with a shameless plug for the Minnesota Homestead Credit Refund. I touched on it earlier. Uh, but I want to reiterate um that there's two programs or there's two types uh for homeowners and renters. Uh, twenty thirteen did enhance the program. There's the regular property tax refund. That's the one that's income-based that I highlighted before. There's also a special property tax refund. This is for anybody regardless of income. If your property taxes increase more than twelve percent and at least a hundred dollars or more, you could qualify for a refund. And uh, definitely check with your accountant on that. And with that, uh, I will answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Kirchmal. It's a lot of information. I appreciate it. And and frankly, I like how uh you re- reconfigured the information this year. I think it it tells the story and it it's a necessary story to tell. And so I think, well done. I think it it helps to clarify things and explain it a little bit better. Council questions. I see Councilmember Loman and Councilmember DeLisandro. Councilmember Loman.
Thank you, Mayor. So I got to go back to your first or one of your first slides where you have the uh property taxes with seventeen percent there, increase in market value, means my my uh, won't increase by seventeen percent. And I can just, I can feel the people writing me right now in my email and uh saying, you know, gosh, I don't feel that. You know, and then if, you know, if my, you know, value was, let's say it was two fifty and now it goes up to, let's say, two seventy-five, wouldn't my proportion increase of of the overall levy? And so wouldn't my taxes increase? I mean, that's one thing I've heard somebody argue once before.
Yeah, so uh, Mayor, Councilmember Loman, if your value went up more than seventeen percent, you certainly could see a shift. You could see a shift in property taxes. Um, the median's up seventeen. And so if you're up more than seventeen, you might see a little extra property tax on top of that. Uh, if you're below seventeen, you might see a little bit of a decrease uh because of value shifting. But as far as just rates, uh, the way we've looked at it this year and we're uh uh, understanding we're coming off of last year, which was completely different, where we saw a nine percent decrease in commercial and an increase in residential. Um, so there was a, there was a shift in property taxes and that's why those phone calls have lasted twenty minutes. Um, this year, it's not the case. We're going to see a direct proportional decrease in our tax rate before any levy decisions. So seventeen percent is is the, is the average this year when it comes to, or about the average when it comes to uh market value.
I I appreciate you uh explaining that. I know that some folks, I mean, this is very complex and it gets, you know, even as you're explaining it, it gets really complex. Um, one other thing I wanted to just say and then I'll, I'll move on, let other folks ask questions. Um, when I I saw those, those rates and the values going up, the 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 thing that kept going on in my head was how similar to uh to two thousand eight uh uh are some of these trends that we're seeing from a, from a value perspective from our residential area?
Yeah, Mayor and Councilmember Loman, um, it feels similar, right? It feels similar, but fundamentally it's drastically different. And it's drastically different. Let's see if I can count how many bullet points I'm going to say, but you know, probably three or four different ways. One, lending standards are completely different. Um, two, uh, a lot of folks uh that bought homes in two thousand five, six and seven were coming out of multifamily. Um, we don't have that this time around. Um, we went through a period of time uh in this state and in this country where we didn't build homes. And so we are at a deficit of the number of homes that are available. Uh, millennials are probably, I think, they are now the number one uh uh home buyers out there. Uh, a lot of them have been, you know, potentially renting and now are looking to start families and moving to the suburbs. Um, and then uh, you know, there's one other one and I've, I've lost the point, but uh, it is, it is different this time around. And really, when you were looking at all the data, there's, there's nothing in the supply and demand uh function that tells us there's a bubble brewing. Um, one thing that I think will happen, and I think it'll be, it'll soften pricing a little bit, is if interest rates continue to rise like they are, that means there's going to be less demand in the system. Right now, we're seeing, you know, people buying thirty to forty thousand dollars above asking price. That's at seven percent-ish. Um, on a normal market, realtors like to try to achieve ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven percent of ask. So if we could get to a po- a part where pricing may stay the same, but acceptable offers falls by ten percent, we could see some softening of pricing, but it's not going to be a a sharp decline by, you know, forty percent or something that we saw in the six period, six years of the market crash.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
First time I've gotten a chance to talk to you other than as a, just a resident with a tax bill. So I brought them because I just wanted to make sure I I spoke with my word, my, my numbers in the event that I had um couldn't articulate it in a theoretical sense. So I think one of the challenges that we've seen uh for uh, folks is that these um, these assessments land at about the same time that the notices for last year's assessment land, right? So in March, I got both my city of Bloomington property value assessment and my bill for last year's, right? And so what, what tends to happen to folks is they wonder why there's a number on this Hennepin County bill that looks like it went up, uh, but they can't figure, they can't reconcile the numbers with each other. And so I'm, I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about um, how you're advising the people that have, that have called you um, about, you know, where they should be looking and what they should be paying attention to right now versus later in the process as we go through our budgeting.
Sure, sure. Uh, Mayor and Councilmember DeLisandro, yeah, that's, that's the crux of the twenty-minute phone call. Um, and so that tax statement you got um is showing your two, it's and and the, the state has tried. It's a uniform statement now. They've tried to separate taxes payable versus assessment year. Um, and the top right-hand corner tells you kind of where that, where we are in that process. Um, and so the tax statement that you actually are received is for taxes payable in twenty-one and twenty-two. That's based off of the twenty value and the twenty-two, twenty-one value. Um, the valuation statement that you just got is the twenty-two value for taxes payable in two thousand twenty-three. Um, it's very confusing and it's uh, you have to actually have folks write it down on a piece of paper, walk them through it and then throw in the nuance of last year's pandemic with a decrease of commercial value. Why values and taxes didn't line up last year. Um, my value didn't go. My value didn't go up as, my value went up a little bit, but my taxes went up a lot. And now you're telling me that my value's gone up a lot, but my taxes aren't going to go up as much. Yeah, that's exactly what I'm telling you.
Right.
And I don't have a digital whiteboard to, to show it. So we've tried, we've tried to explain it in, in so many words, but there's nothing easy about Minnesota property tax. Nothing.
May I ask one more question? Do you, do you expect that a lot of folks will come to the open house then as a result? Are you expecting a larger-than-normal group?
Yeah, I would anticipate we will have some folks in attendance that hadn't come before. I will tell you, you know, that we've had about twice as many phone calls, but we've had half as many value reductions. So people are calling, they're asking, we're sharing data, we're, you know, sending them out to our website, having them look up sales and trying to coach them through it and explain the process. And this is kind of step one. You'll see me probably in September, and you'll see me in, in, in December, kind of explaining what's happening. But yeah, there's, in the last fifteen years, there's, you know, this, the market value and, and there's been nothing real stable about it. It's actually, you know, been kind of tough, but yeah.
Thank you very much for mentioning those. And, and thank you to Commissioner Gotel. I asked her, when I saw her earlier last week, to potentially be here in case there were Hennepin County-specific questions that also needed to maybe come up. So I'll defer there. But I think what I heard is lots of whiteboards available at that April meeting. Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Gerschmel, so one of the main concerns, or the main question that I get from people, and heard them personally from two people who honestly should know better. The, the question was, or the assertion was that the city was intentionally and artificially increasing property values to collect more taxes. And that this was completely out of line, and that this was something that we were creating here at Bloomington City Hall. So we had the seventeen percent roughly percentage increase in home values in the city of Bloomington. Do you have numbers for all of Hennepin County? Do you have numbers for surrounding counties here in the Twin Cities?
Yeah, so the, not with me right here tonight, so Mayor, to answer your question. Hennepin County did just post their assessment report, so that has good data. It has all the, what happened in Hennepin County. Our colleagues, what's really interesting is when we look at the data, what's happened is is people are looking for more square footage and extra bedrooms. You have to, in a lot of ways, you have to go out to find those. And so we're seeing higher values outside of the ring, four ninety-four loop. The moment you get into kind of that ex-urban area where you actually have a little bit more space and people can, again, work from anywhere. Scott County and Dakota County and Carver County are all in the twenty percent plus range. And then, as I mentioned, my colleagues that are up north, kind of north of Brainerd Lakes area, again, potentially smaller values, you know, that's the, that's the fun with percentages, right? Increasing probably the same dollar amounts, but on a percentage basis, they're up twenty, thirty, forty percent. Lake Shore, up in northern Minnesota, is up nearly fifty percent. So it, it's, it's national, it's everywhere, and it's been this phenomena with buyer expectations. There was a period of time, three, four, five years ago, that, you know, a, a larger two-story home didn't command very much in, in, in price, as people were downsizing. That trend is completely reversed.
So you're saying it's not some dark nefarious plot by the city of Bloomington that we're seeing increases like this backed up by data, specific data across the state of Minnesota, increases of at least the amounts that we're seeing here in the city of Bloomington. Is that correct?
That is correct. And if I zoom in here to this property tax piece, the function that the city of, city council, our friends with the county commissioners and our school district folks, the only way that you can levy more property taxes is by increasing your levy. Values set the shares, but our valuation process has nothing to do with the property taxes that you're going to collect. That is set by you. And in fact, the way I understand it is if, for some reason, you didn't actually certify a levy in September and you missed it, fumbled the football, if you will, your levy stays the same from last year. So that's why it's, it's relevant to say, after the assessment process this year, values are up about seventeen percent, you're going to see about the same amount of decrease in the city tax rate.
So in addition to, you know, there's claims of nefarious plots on your part, the other thing that I've heard from folks is that you have no idea what you're doing. That, that this is just completely out of hand, and that you're, that you just are simply off the rails. You don't know what you're doing. So you got, you got six hundred and fifty calls. Let's say all six hundred and fifty of those folks went to the local Board of Appeal. They went to the County Board of Appeal, all the way up to the tax court. What percentage would actually change in terms of their valuation? Any ideas?
Not, not, not a lot.
So would, would six hundred and fifty calls, would, would two hundred change in valuation?
Probably not even two hundred this year. Probably less than a hundred.
So less than a hundred. So one out of six of the six fifty, so.
And usually, and, and Mr. Mayor, usually the reason those do get lowered is because we maybe hadn't been out to the house. We're required once every five years to go through and do a reappraisal. Sometimes it's been a few years since we've been out there. And style changes and characteristic changes, and so that would be the, usually the reason why there's a, a value decrease is, you know, something's incorrect. And that's last year, and that brings up a good point. Last year, we actually switched to a questionnaire for our quintile process. The questionnaire is out on the website, and we're going to be doing that again this year. Last year was the first year we put our property characteristics out on the web. And so we are asking folks to go out, verify the data. If it's wrong by a little bit, we'll correct it. If it's wrong by a lot, we'll send somebody out and verify it. But the better, better data that we have, the better job we can do in setting all those values.
So if you're right, five out of six times, more than eighty percent of the time, you're confident in what you're doing. Now granted, there are some changes, twenty percent of the time, you know, roughly, give or take, if there's possible changes, but but you, you do know what you're doing.
Yeah, our thrust is to be ninety to a hundred and five percent. So there is, you know, there is that portion in ass appraisal that you could be a little bit high.
Understood. Thank you. Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you. And, and picking up on that, on that last line of questioning there, how is that enforced or verified? I mean, is, who, I mean, it's, it's not just up to folks here at the city of Bloomington, correct? How was, I mean, how are those valuation and, and those numbers? How is that sort of ninety to a hundred and five percent number? How is that sort of adhered to?
Jump back into this market value. So there's, the Department of Revenue does a, a sales study sample. And so every year, and that's where we get the time trend. We calculate it ourselves, but it's actually calculated by the Department of Revenue and given to us. We set our values. And then, you know, based off of those trends, if we don't, if we're not above ninety, they'll come through with a, the State Board of Assessors will meet, and I believe it's in June-ish, maybe July-ish. They'll come through and they can order a five percent increase to all property in a specific class, if you fall below ninety. So that's how that's enforced.
Yeah, thank you. So, I mean, so the, the point is that, that, that there is sort of a, a.
There is oversight.
Yes, oversight is, I was going to use the term higher authority, but that didn't feel quite right.
We, we like to call them the oversight committee, oversight.
The other, the other question I had, and actually, this is exactly the slide I was going to ask about. So the, the process, you know, first, obviously, first step of the process is talk to one of our appraisers here at the city of Bloomington. And then we have our local Board of Appeal on April twentieth. If I, if someone misses the local board on April twentieth, can they still go to the county board? Or does the process have to, one has to follow another?
Yeah, on the, on the, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Coulter, yes. In order to attend the County Board of Appeal, you must at least be entered into the record at the local Board of Appeal. And so there's, there's always a handful of folks that contact us that can't make it to the April meeting. And we make sure to read them into the record, have their value sustained at the local level, so we preserve their rights to appeal to the County Board in June.
Okay. And then just quick, what is, what is the process for being heard by the local Board of Appeal? How do folk, if folks out there watching at home who may already know this, if they're watching a city council meeting, if they want to get on the, the, the record for the local Board of Appeal, what do they need to do?
So they, they, they can contact us to get on the agenda. And then what they'd want to do is prepare, they'd want to look for sales that have occurred within, you know, the last six months or so to a year. And then they would want to present their case as to why they think their value is not correct. And the local Board of Appeal is appointed. We have two commercial appraisers, and we have three realtors that are on our local Board of Appeal. So they're real estate experts that volunteer to be the local authority.
Thank you.
Councilmember DeLisandro mentioned that Commissioner Gotel was here this evening. Thank you for joining us. And as Chair of the Hennepin County Board Budget Committee, anything you can add to the conversation, enlighten us in some way, or?
No, first of all, I want to sing the praises of your city assessor, because I know how great he is. I want to, I want to sing the praises of your city assessor. So, Mr. Mayor, council members, administration, I'm Debbie Gotel, Hennepin County Commissioner, and I get to serve this great city of Bloomington. And dealing with these kinds of things are difficult. And yes, sometimes things do go all the way up to the county. It is probably less than a dozen appeals up at the county level throughout the entire Hennepin County. And very few of those get any kind of change. And some of them, quite frankly, have been very well done. In fact, if we really looked at them, we would probably increase their values on some of these, but we don't do that after the fact, correct?
We try not to.
We try not to do that. But you know what? You had to see, hear a lot of challenges, and, and you've probably gotten the calls and the emails yourself, I have. Our county has as well. I just want to say that there is some bright spots here that I, I just want to add. There isn't anything else I can add to this great report except that I can say the county mirrors Bloomington. We see industry and industrial and commercial going up, too. We also see the million-dollar homes going up. That does kind of equalize the taxes in the future if this is a trend and it stays this way, and it does look like it's a trend. So that's maybe some good news. The other good news is that the legislature is looking at the homestead market value exclusion, and they're looking at changing those values. And they're looking at moving them up significantly and looking at if there are large changes that it will automatically reset. So some of the legislation on that will be very helpful. The county does have a deferral program where the city of Bloomington may not, but we do, and it's mostly for seniors or people in fixed incomes. There is income qualifying. They're looking at moving some of those qualifications as well to help folks out. And further considerations for some other legislative sessions, I think, are, are coming up. I think there's also talk of a new property percent classification of zero point seven five for community land trust units that, that are owned and occupied by homestead, a significant reduction in classification rate. Of course, that means the equalization flies someplace, correct? So we know how this works. And so I think you're going to see something. We are hopeful, and we think that it is likely that some of these changes will happen. So I think there will be some relief for some of the residents here, and some, many of them actually from Bloomington that are contacting me. So they're our constituents. So that's all I have to say, unless you have any further questions for me.
Council, any questions of Commissioner DeLisandro? Oh, excuse me, Commissioner Gotel, I just, I just gave you a pay raise, exactly. Commissioner Gotel, any questions? Councilmember Loman?
I just want to, want to thank you for, for coming this evening and really giving a different perspective and to really assure our residents that what we're seeing at the Hennepin County level is what we're seeing here in Bloomington. So thank you for coming.
Yeah, there's nothing nefarious going on. I can assure you. And thank you for inviting me. Please feel free to invite me in the future.
Absolutely. Councilmember DeLisandro.
Just one kind of overarching note. Thank you again, Commissioner Gotel. You know, one of the things that I have been thinking about as it relates to this is I don't want to assume that there's any, you know, effort at collusion or anything like that, but I think one of the things that these kinds of conversations can bring forward is that people are, are going to be, if we don't pay attention kind of as a group, like if we think about the Watershed District and the School Board and the Hennepin County taxes and the city taxes together, if we don't think about it that way, we could make it this particular year especially rather difficult for people, especially those who are above that seventeen percent threshold and may find themselves in a, in a, whatever happens to the, the, the tax rate that it, you know, it, it, it changes dramatically. So I'm hoping that we can be a little bit more, I don't know, circumspect i- in, in terms of the total value of all the line items on that, on that Hennepin County sheet. And, and we can think about that as, as a, working together as bodies of taxing authority, you know, in, at the, in this particular year especially. So, thanks.
Well said. Thank you. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make one last comment. Mr. Gerschmel, thank you so much for all of the improvements to the website and making things so much more transparent. And as complicated and, and tough as property tax law is to understand and the impacts to residents themselves are, it's kind of hard to just kind of dig through what it all means. I think that the example you provided, Councilmember DeLisandro, of having your, both of your pieces of documentation you got in the mail recently, as hard as it is to understand, I think, the more that we can continue to provide information to residents. And so just want to thank you for all of the, the good, the links, the, the news links, everything. Really, really appreciate it. I also wondered, were the slides in a follow-up email? Because I don't see them in the pack.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, the presentation for this evening is, is in the updated agenda that was posted this afternoon.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Yeah, it's on the website.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just got two quick questions. When we talk about a seventeen percent increase in property values, is that an average of each property? As an example, if I have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar property that goes up twenty percent, that's a fifty thousand dollar increase. If I have a five hundred thousand dollar property that goes up ten percent, that's a fifty thousand dollar increase. So a hundred thousand over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I don't even know what that percentage is, versus, you know, twenty and ten is fifteen. My, my understanding is that seventeen percent is, we had about nine billion dollars worth of residential. It went up seventeen percent overall. Is that under?
Yeah, and it's, and, yeah, you are correct. And it's in, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, it's, it's tracking across all of those segments. And so one of the last pages of the assessment report actually gives kind of a breakdown of where those value increases by markets, by strata. And so we're seeing at the lower end of the strata about a fourteen, fifteen percent increase. And then as you go up in that strata, it's topping up over twenty percent. And so twenty percent on, you know, a, a, a five hundred thousand dollar home is a hundred grand. Twenty percent, you know, so there, it's, it's real dollars that people are seeing those increases. And it's not uncommon if you were a five hundred thousand dollar home last year to be a six hundred thousand dollar home this year. It's not uncommon at all.
Well, thank you. And you anticipated my second follow-up question, so very well done. But it was, one of the concerns we've talked about previously is the impact on the lower-value houses that they were for a while increasing faster, and it sounds like that is not the case in this, this time, that we're not seeing that impact to those people that are frankly least able to afford an increase.
That's correct. It's actually, we're seeing it in the low, in the higher-value strata right now, because that's where the square footage is. That's where the extra bedrooms are. And that's, in a lot of ways, a few years ago, law diminishing returns, that extra square footage didn't get a premium. And now today, that extra bedroom and that extra square footage, people are paying a premium for.
Thank you very much.
Council, if there are no further questions, let's move on. Mr. Gerschmel, thank you so very much. Appreciate it, and appreciate the information. Council, we are at about eight twenty, and because we did move to our new six-thirty start time, and we had the pomp and circumstance of the swearing-in, I just want to make sure that we keep an eye on the clock the rest of the way. We do have a couple, a couple of bigger items still, and I want to make sure we get through everything in a reasonable hour because I know that we all have work to get up for in the morning. Item three on our agenda is the consent agenda. Councilmember Martin, I believe, has our consent business tonight. Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. So far, I've got holds for.
Thank you, Mayor. So far, I've got holds for items 3.1 and 3.10. Was there any others?
3.11.
Okay. Any other holds? Okay. Seeing none, I will move approval of 3, 2 to 3, 9.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Carter, to accept the consent business items 3, 2 to 3, 9. Hearing no further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7, 0. Councilmember Martin, why don't we start on item 3, 10, and we'll double back to 3, 1 if we could. Item 3, 10?
Perfect. 3, 10 was held by Councilmembers Dela Sando and Councilmember Nelson mentioned it as well.
All right. We'll start with Councilmember Dela Sando. Councilmember Dela Sando.
All right. Thank you, sir. There was a, a resident question that came in about this, and so I just wanted to make sure that we gave some clarity to the, to the action item that's here at the moment. It looks to me, and Mr. Verbrugge, this is probably a question for you, it looks to me that this is just a, a resolution supporting us going after some funding for a project. The project itself is not being, there's no specific project on the books right now, correct, that we're, that we are doing our, that we're voting on today, right? So I'm assuming there will be some opportunity in the future for us to get more details about exactly what we mean by bicycle facility project and things like that in the future? Is that right?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Dela Sando, the final decision for design is going to be determined at a later date, so the resolution that you have reflects the decision will be made later.
Would, will there be an opportunity for public comment on that? Are you expecting that to be the case?
Let me look at, Public Works staff is nodding their heads yes in unison. They got three of them lined up, so.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
There will be, there will be additional public engagement.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. In a similar vein to Councilmember Dela Sando, I had heard from people, and also living near that area, had some questions, concerns about the resolution. One of the wherashes said that the 10-foot wide would be on the west side from staff, and I appreciate the information I received, that there seemed to be a logic to that. I also had some concerns, because I believe there's about a dozen driveways with front yards on the west side, and to my knowledge, I think there's only two on the east side. And so there would be potential impacts in that way. And so my only question is if we could slightly modify the language to leave it open to whether or not the 10-foot wide is on the west or east side, and have staff look at that, what makes the most sense? There was some language in there that they'd look at the entirety of the situation essentially. And so that was the only request, is if we could just slightly modify that language.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, staff is comfortable with that if you want to make that revision when you adopt the resolution.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that, and I appreciate the efforts to reach out to the community in the neighborhood there. That's.
Very good. Anything else on item 3, 10? If not, Councilmember Nelson, I would look for a motion, and if you could kind of craft the motion to include the changed language that you had as well, that would be useful.
Okay. All right. So we got a motion here. I would move to adopt a resolution of support for a bicycle facility, Normandale Boulevard Multimodal Trail between Old Shakopee and Old Shakopee Road and West 84th Street, including the option to have the 10-foot bituminous trail on the west or east side. And/or east side. And/or.
Have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Ms. Manderscheid?
Mayor members, just to be clear, I understand the amendment that is being sought by Councilmember Nelson to be that the fourth whereas, where it says west, would say west or east and/or east, but you're not going to have it on east and west. So be.
I do believe the current language states are.
Oh, okay. My bad. All right. Okay. West and/or east side of the roadway.
Yeah. That, that's what you meant to say, Councilmember Nelson?
That is exactly what I meant to say.
I knew that. I knew that was to be the case. We have a motion by Councilmember Nelson, a second by Councilmember Dela Sando, to accept item 3.10 as amended and as stated in the consent business. Hearing no further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7, 0. Item 3.11, I believe that was you, Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I simply want to abstain, since I was not present at the meeting.
Very good. So with that, Councilmember Martin, if you could move item 3.11 for us?
Sure. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of the March 7, 2022 meeting as presented.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Loman, to accept item 3.11, the council meeting minutes, with Councilmember Carter abstaining because she was not at the meeting. Hearing no further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 6, 0, with Carter abstaining. Doubling back to item 3.1, the resolution to accept donations. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. I always love when my consent agenda nights line up with donation item. Quick shout-out to the Boy Scouts of America Troop Number 374. Thank you so much to the, for the donation of the Bloomington Police Chaplains Program. It's very appreciated. And we had a few groups in the community, Bundles of Love, Diaper Bank, supporting our Public Health Department's maternal health programming. Thank you for keeping their work top of mind, as well as Adina Schools for a lot of personal protective equipment. And again, thank you not only for the folks that have donated tonight, or will in the future, or have in the past, it's all. It all goes a long way for us. And with that, I will make a motion that we adopt a resolution to accept the donations as listed.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Dela Sando, to accept the resolution to accept the donations, item 3.1 on the consent business. Hearing no further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7, 0. Thank you, Councilmember Martin. Move on to item four on our agenda, which is our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. And as I mentioned earlier this evening, we have four items, and we did amend the agenda to move item 4.4 up to the front of this list of public hearings. So I will call right now item 4.4. This is a public hearing regarding the earned, sick, and safe leave ordinance. That is under discussion and under proposal before us tonight. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Again, this item is a consideration of ordinance language that would require earned, sick, and safe leave be provided by employers in the city of Bloomington to employees. This was a direction from council at the beginning of last year, that city staff initiate a process, and at the front end of that process, we asked the question of the council, if you wanted us to engage a working group for the purpose of studying the issue and present options to the council, or if you wanted the working group to produce ordinance recommendations with specific language. The council, prior to the process starting, directed that the working group should work towards a, an ordinance for the city council to consider, and that's the product that is in front of you this evening, having gone through a working group process, and then also several conversations with the city council about those recommendations. And so staff has continued to listen to direction from the working group and the, and the council to put this language together this evening. The, the working group was facilitated by several staff. It began with our previous assistant city manager, Chris Wilson, our deputy city attorney, Peter Zuniga, Kate Ebert from our Public Health Department, and Tracy Smith from our Community Outreach and Engagement Division. Obviously, Chris Wilson left us mid-year to take on a different opportunity, and so our new assistant city manager, Michael Sable, stepped into that role, and has picked up where she left off. So at this point, I'm going to invite Mr. Sable to provide the overview on the process. Mr. Zuniga, or actually, Kate Ebert will talk about the public health aspects of the, of the earned, sick, and safe leave, and Peter Zuniga will talk about the actual ordinance language itself. Mike?
Mr. Sable, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, Mike Sable, Assistant City Manager for the City of Bloomington. Appreciate the city manager's introduction to that, and I really think this is a, kind of a three-part effort. And so Kate will talk significantly about the public health outcomes that are planned for the creation of this ordinance. I will handle some of the process and procedural questions, and then I'll defer ordinance language, ordinance specific language to Mr. Zuniga, who drafted it. And so this will be the, the third time we've talked about it at this governing body, at this, at this body. But Kate, oh, excuse me, I will turn it over to you to start the slide deck.
Good evening, Ms. Ebert. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Bussey. Thank you, councilmembers. Hopefully you can see those slides, okay?
We can see them, yes.
Perfect. Yes, thank you for having me. My name is Kate Ebert. I am the Health and All Policy Specialist on our public health team, and excited to be here tonight to talk a little bit about a public health impact of a paid, sick, and safe leave policy. So one of the reasons why we are here today is currently, there is no national or state-level sick leave policy, and so it is up to local jurisdictions to create and adopt these ordinances. When we look nationally, we see 79% of civilian workers have access to paid sick leave, but hidden within that number, we see disparities between the high-wage workers and the low-wage workers. Those are defined as civilian workers who make in the top 10%. Their hourly wage puts them in the top 10%, or the bottom 10%, respectively. And we see disparities in access to paid leave, among other areas as well, not just income. We see it based on industry, based on race, based on sex. You know, we all have the, the potential to fall ill, right? Or we all make care for somebody who can fall ill and need to utilize this policy, but we don't all have access to paid sick leave across the board. When we look at some of the disparities between race and sex, we see our BIPOC community and women in our community having less access to paid sick leave. We also see industry differences. We heard a lot about frontline workers during COVID, and frontline workers face increased exposure, right, as they're working with the public. And frontline workers are less likely to have access to paid sick leave. There are also jobs that are more likely to be held by BIPOC communities. I wanted to highlight, when you look at some of the research about the industries with the greatest public health exposure risks, you'll see industries such as healthcare, education, food service, and accommodation in retail. And I highlighted those because the Census Bureau estimates that these four industries make up, or cover about 41% of Bloomington residents. And so when we're thinking about, right, who in our workforce is facing some of the highest risk, and who might not have access, we are looking at some of these industries and the disparities they may have. The, when we think about the impact that this can have on our community's well-being, we were two years, two-plus years into COVID, and so I think this has all hit us, you know, personally, or we know somebody that this has impacted pretty personally. But even prior to this, you know, novel coronavirus, we were tracking the public health impacts of policies like these on different viral outbreaks. So in 2009, you may remember, we had an H1N1 outbreak, and after the fact assessments, when we were kind of doing situation reports, studies estimated that between five and seven million Americans contracted the flu due to a lack of paid sick leave. So there was a lot of that workforce exposure and community spread that way. In addition to, you know, these viruses like flu and COVID, we also see the spread of foodborne illnesses, which across the board are underreported. But the ones that are, we can see that, from the data, that 46%, almost half of those restaurant-associated outbreaks involved an infected food service worker. So again, those that are unable to take that paid time off of work to stay at home when they are infectious, for fear of losing wages or, or losing employment. But the research also shows that paid sick leaves attribute to safer working conditions. Workers with paid sick leave have been shown to be 28% less likely to be injured at work. This is especially important in our manufacturing and construction businesses, where there's a lot of workplace safety issues, and they want people to be healthy and to be fully present when they're at work. We also see increased utilization of preventive care when folks have access to paid leave, both for the employee and for family members. There's research that looks at child, like well-child checkups and visits, and if children are on schedule for their vaccinations, and that's impacted by caregiver's ability to be able to take some time off, to be able to get them to appointments. An important part of that preventative care is also vaccinations. I think if, if you talk to anybody who's worked, you know, vaccination clinics, or talked with community members around COVID, we often heard, you know, the fear of losing wages, or having to take time off if they had side effects from the vaccine. And so that was often a, a discussion point that our community health workers had to have, you know, with our community members. So we were like, we would see these decreases in healthcare access disparities, if, you know, more people were covered by a policy like this. We would expect to see healthier and safer workforces with reduced turnover, and less absent days, less sick days, less days out, that they can recover quicker. And then also, I think, you know, last but not least, it's important to acknowledge there's that safe portion on the sick and safe leave, and to acknowledge the immense benefits this policy can have on the health and well-being of victims or survivors of domestic violence and intimate partner violence. This is definitely a public health crisis that we don't talk about much, but the reality is that one in four women and one in 12 men are likely to experience this type of violence in their lives. And a policy such as a paid, sick, and safe leave would allow these individuals to access services and resources to support them, again, without the risk of losing wages or, or employment. So I hope, I just wanted to give, you know, a brief overview to remind us kind of why we're talking about this policy tonight, and how it can improve the public health and, and the health of our community, and kind of, kind of ground us in that foundational public health value. And so with that, I do want to pass it on to my colleagues. Mike will talk a little bit about kind of the process of how we got here tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Ebert. We'll double back to you with questions if we have any at the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Sounds great.
Mr. Sable?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Again, in terms of the process and the procedures that the city manager noted, the, the question posed to the task force was, was not whether or to create this, but what it should look like, and to recommend to the city council an ordinance ensuring the provision of paid, earned, sick, and safe leave to individuals, excuse me, working in the city, and the recommended ordinance was to promote and protect the well-being of Bloomington workforce and Bloomington residents, support the city council's strategic priority of equity and inclusion, to balance the unique needs and circumstances of Bloomington employers with a recognition that Bloomington is part of a broader regional labor and service market, to reflect the input of a diverse pool of stakeholders, to outline how the city will ensure compliance with the provisions of the ordinance, and then be as clear, understandable, and uncomplicated as feasible for both employers and employees. Kate, if you could advance the next slide, please. There was a series of, of public meetings and notices, and I did not include sort of the introductory item back in April of 2021, where the, the format, where this concept originated nearly, or exactly a year ago. But the Earned, Sick, and Safe Leave Task Force was established, and it was, it began its work in June of 2021, excuse me. And the task force met three separate times in the June and July timeframe of 2021. There was a break period where there was additional stakeholder outreach and input that was gathered, and this was also the transition point between when Chris Wilson left and when I came on board with the, with the organization. The Earned, Sick, and Safe Leave Task Force then reconvened in October of that year, and really spent the bulk of October and November refining the recommendations. And the, and this was also, if you'll remember, sort of the Delta Omicron wave that happened, and so we did convert a number of our meetings to Zoom, which actually did increase participation. The Earned, Sick, and Safe Leave Task Force did meet at its January 3, at this city council meeting to present the findings and the recommendations. One of the components that's not listed in this public meeting and notices was the recommendation from the council to go to the Advisory Board of Public Health, and so that review body looked at this ordinance and offered some suggestions for improvement and enhancements to this. It was brought forward again to the city council on February 28, again, for some more additional refinement. The city staff have continued to receive questions from interested members of the public throughout all of this time. And again, a, a public hearing notice was posted on March 31, and we have got to this point today for what we believe to be our fifth or sixth conversation with this governing body. Kate, next slide, please. One of the elements that I think helped us frame the decision-making and the conversation is the fact that three other cities in the region, or in the state of Minnesota, have. is the fact that three other cities in the region or in the state of Minnesota have pursued this effort. And so by, in a large measure, the ordinance that's drafted, that's presented for you for consideration, really does follow the Minneapolis model, which was the first ordinance to be presented or passed in the state of Minnesota. And part of why the Minneapolis ordinance is most relevant, obviously, is it, is it our closest peer in terms of proximity, but it also has been tested in court about the legality and the implementation of it. And so there is legal precedent for the standards that they have set. St. Paul and the city of Duluth have followed after the fact. There have been some minor modifications to the ordinance in both of those communities, and the task force really considered changes to one or the other in terms of enhancements or improvements, and some of it is related to technical things like a graduated fee or fine structure. Some of it is related to the ability to sue in civil court should the traditional process not follow through. And so some of them are more technical in nature, but the task force really did wrestle with how to be as close to the Minneapolis ordinance model, but still taking the best elements of the St. Paul and Duluth, knowing that those are large cities in the state that have this ordinance, and then that we could learn from and actually create something that worked for the city of Bloomington. Kate, next slide, please. Again, the broad areas of consideration for the policy really were the public health impact, employer communication and outreach, the ease of compliance across municipalities. So we know that many businesses have multiple locations in multiple cities, and so how do we make it as uncomplicated for them as possible? We also talked about city and community infrastructure to support the compliance. We also wanted to, the task force really spent a significant amount of time talking about the needs of specific small businesses, you know, for example, those with fewer than five employees, and then the rights of specific type of employees. So really wrestled with how to handle seasonal employees, how to handle unpaid student internships, how to handle remote workers, which wasn't a consideration that the other cities really had to wrestle with because they were done pre-COVID. And so I think the task force really tried to wrestle with this to come up with the best recommendation. You know, one of the items that I didn't put into the slide, because I think it's been said before, but this really tried to have a really broad task force that included members of the Chamber of Commerce, had members of the hotel community, small businesses, large businesses. It also included representatives from organized labor and impacted residents and people who were just generally interested in the topic. And so I guess with any group, when you have a broad cross-section of perspectives, there was general disagreement, but the task force really did work, I think, in an important way to try to reach consensus. And so when there wasn't agreement on something, there was a vote taken to sort of state a preference in terms of the recommendation. But it really was, you know, sort of the best element of good, robust community dialogue and engagement from a lot of different stakeholders. I think everybody would say that they, they like the ordinance and don't love it, and I think that's maybe a measure of a good action. Kate, could you go to the next slide, please? Did want to talk about just at a, at a high level, what the earned sick and safe leave benefit does. It does provide one hour of earned sick and safe leave for every thirty hours of work, with a maximum of forty-eight hours earned per year and a cap of eighty hours, unused hours at any one time. And I think that's an important factor to think about, is if someone is a part-time worker, working fourteen, one thousand four hundred and forty hours a year, that's about what they can earn in terms of a maximum year. So it's a, it provides a real tangible benefit to people who might not have access to paid leave. The employee may use the leave after ninety days of employment, so it's not a benefit that starts immediately. So that was a recognition to, as in, a recognition to the employer that they also have to have a timeframe to sort of build a structure around to support employee leave. We did settle on definition of employee, and that's someone who works at least eighty hours in a year, including temporary seasonal and part-time from a physical location or locations within the geographic boundaries of the city. It does exempt those who are on extended employment programs, independent contractors, and unpaid student interns. Next slide, Kate, please. And then the, you know, the seasonal employees, this was, you know, one of these questions about if there's a separation and an employee returns to the same employer, previously accrued leave must be reinstated. Now, there was an email to the city council, which I want to acknowledge tonight, from representatives from Xcel Energy, who raised, I think, an important question. And it, the language is, was potentially confusing to some, and it was intended to be that you don't get a second bite at the apple, that if an employee earns it, leaves, and is paid out their benefit, they don't get to come back and have a new benefit reinstated. So the economic value of the leave is intended to be capped, and I think Mr. Zuniga and I have kind of talked about that, and so potentially offer up some specification and a little bit of clarification on that component. We did also talk significantly about the number of employees, and so similar to the Minneapolis ordinance, this threshold, this employee, employer with six or more employees must offer a paid leave benefit consistent with one hour for every thirty hours of work. For those with small, small employers, small numbers of employees, those under five, did have to provide unpaid leave, so someone could still leave, but they did not get paid for that time. I think two notable differences between the Bloomington ordinance and what would be in Minneapolis was this graduated fine structure in Minneapolis. It's a fixed number based on number of violations where in the, in the model, the way that this ordinance is drafted, a violation, you know, there's obviously an opportunity for coaching and for training and for educating a business that does violate it, but there's also a warning letter and then a notice to correct. And then we can attempt to mediate that by increasing a fee. So if a business is a repeat offender in a lot of these instances, the, the cost of non-compliance goes up as a way to enhance or entice compliance. And then private right of action, I mentioned earlier, this is the ability to go after and pursue civil penalties should the, the regular administrative hearing process or that play out. And so that is a very brief summary, Mr. Mayor and city councilmembers. I know there's a lot of components in this that has raised a lot of questions. I've been fielding questions all week and the better part of last week as well, and so this is, I think, an important policy consideration. I will, we will stand for any questions, and I think just for the city council's benefit, Kate Ebert can handle the public health considerations and those elements. I can hopefully handle the process components, and then the city attorney can handle the actual language within the ordinance itself as it's drafted.
Thank you, Mr. Sable. Council questions? Councilmember Loman.
So, you know, Mike, I did give you a little bit of a update that I would give you this question. So I did get some calls over the weekend and on Friday with regards to the structure of our working group. There was concerns from some folks from the chamber and some realtors, not realtors, but retailers, who had mentioned that they did not, you know, in terms of our, the way that we laid out our charge to the council, that balance of unique need between labor and, you know, economic interest. And so what I wanted to have staff go through is to just kind of discuss and talk about that in terms of what that representation looked like and what happened during that, that period of time. I think that it's reasonable for folks to know, because what I keep hearing is that they didn't know anything about this, so.
Mr. Sable.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Loman, appreciate the question. This was, I mean, I received a phone call from representatives from the Mall of America this week or in this, and last week, saying the same thing. And I will say, as a, as an organization and as a community, I was, A, a little surprised, and B, just a little disappointed in staff, and that falls on me. We could have done more outreach. You know, when we created, then when the task force was created, it tried to have a broad cross-section that included representatives from hospitality, the representatives from the regional chamber. And so we really did try to have a broad cross-section. There were some small businesses located in Bloomington that were members, and there were members, very large members, large, large employers and their, you know, government relations councils. And so, you know, we make an effort to have a broad cross-section. We encourage people's participation. The, the meetings were publicly available, so it was sort of atypical for a task force in that these were noticed as public meetings, minutes were taken, recordings were done. And so also recognize that 2021 was an incredibly difficult year for engagement. We just couldn't, and some of them were practical realities that COVID kept us apart and kept us different from one another. It made conversations a little bit difficult, and I think there was also an element of fatigue in that people had, were tired of trying to respond to a call on Zoom, or just didn't want to do one more online survey. And so I think one of the things that I will freely acknowledge is that the, the level of digital engagement that we got from our survey was not what we had hoped to have. And so that was one of the pieces that, you know, as a task force, we brainstormed, you know, should we pay extra money for somebody to go out in the field and stand on a, you know, stand, no offense, but stand on the second floor of the mall and ask passersby what they thought? Or if we could go and, and speak to the hundreds and potentially thousands of employees about what would a earned sick and safe leave benefit do for you and your family? We didn't get that level of outreach. Part of it was, again, a COVID restriction and the recognition that we didn't want to go out and, and, you know, ask people directly because, quite frankly, we didn't know if they would want to answer us with the way COVID worked out through all of 2021. But I will acknowledge that the participation was intended to be inclusive of all perspectives. We did our very best. We tried to get the right people at the table. I understand that some people may not have appreciated or wanted a more direct touch, and so as staff, we will, we will own that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I had one other, I've got several questions, but I'm just going to ask two to give other folks the opportunity to, to ask questions. You know, I had raised a number of times with regards to the three-day, sort of three-day or five-day doctor's note, and I wanted to just see what that language is just so broadly the public could hear what that would look like or see what that would look like, because I am curious about that. So just, and for those folks who are just tuning in, basically, the idea is, is that the way that this was written before today is that once you got to, was it, is it a three day or is it five days?
It was three days.
Three days. If you didn't have medical insurance, then theoretically, you couldn't, my understanding was you wouldn't be able to utilize this benefit, and hopefully this was, this language might help to kind of mitigate some of that. I know it probably won't do it all, but.
Mr. Zuniga.
Mr. Mayor and councilmember Loman, in the current draft of the ordinance, it allowed an employer to require reasonable documentation if the employee was going to be gone from work or utilizing the sick and safe leave for three consecutive days. One of the, the challenges that we had, recognizing your concern with a doctor's note and people may not have access to, to health insurance, is that the sick leave covers, the sick and safely ordinance covers a variety of circumstances that don't involve a doctor. And so to, to write it in a specific way that if only, employers can only require the reasonable documentation if they're providing the, the health insurance benefits gets a little complex and convoluted, but we certainly recognize your concern, and we would have language that we could offer that would, I think, help address the situations where a medical provider was involved. And if the employee didn't have access to it, then that takes into account the employer requiring that. And then it also addresses the, the different circumstances that the ordinance offers protections as well. For example, if your child's school is closed because of weather, you would have the ability to take time under this ordinance as well.
Thank you for clarifying that. I just think that's important, that you can meet the requirement. Thank you.
Council, additional questions? Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a few questions here. I think I understand where we, where the ordinance is at seasonal employees. Now, it's the three hundred and sixty-five days if they come back. What about remote employees? I was maybe a little bit vague on that.
Mr. Zuniga.
Mr. Mayor and councilmember Nelson, yes, we did address the seasonal employees. That is included in the definition of employee, which would include full-time, part-time, temporary employees. And then we heard the council's direction that they want seasonal employees to be covered by the, the ordinance. And so when an employee separates employment, we extended that timeframe from ninety days to three hundred and sixty-five days, so that if a seasonal employee left, they would, and they were returned within that one year, they would have access to the unused accrued leave. When it comes to remote workers, as Mr. Sable mentioned, as the task force was discussing this, that wasn't something that the other three cities had to address because they didn't have this concept of remote workers as we knew. When, when looking at how do we address that, I don't think there was quite an easy way to do it. At the beginning of the presentation, you heard from Kate Ebert and Mike Sable about why we're doing this and what we hope to accomplish, which is really the public health of the employees and the citizens within Bloomington. And so the way we address remote workers is that currently within the definition, we added if they're working from a physical location within the city. So that would cover a variety of circumstances where a Bloomington resident is working remotely, but they happen to work for an employer in St. Paul. They would still receive the protections of the ordinance. You know, I think one of the comments that we heard last time we were here was, you know, when a remote worker is not in the workplace, they're not bringing a contagious illness or sickness into the workplace. That's only one aspect of the consideration. We also have to look at what we're also trying to accomplish, that employees have the ability to take time off work and go seek medical attention, that they also have the ability to, to take time off from work to attend a court proceeding in a domestic violence or sexual assault case. So there's a variety of circumstances where we do want to extend those protections to people working within Bloomington.
Okay, thank you. As follow-up, I think one of the things that we've talked about, and I know was a big concern for the chamber and their members, was consistency. If we're going to do this with other localities, are we consistent on how we treat seasonal employees and remote employees with Minneapolis and St. Paul in particular?
Mr. Mayor and councilmember Nelson, we are consistent for the most part. Where we do differ when it comes to seasonal employees is that we've extended that ninety-day timeframe for, for separation, and we have extended that to three hundred and sixty-five. So we will be different in that regard. When it comes to remote workers, I believe we are consistent with Minneapolis.
Okay. And I think, Mr. Sable, and I appreciate your candor in terms of the outreach and the discussions with people, and I guess one of the things you had mentioned is there were things that the task group discussed and agreed on, and then there were some things that, you know, of course, maybe they didn't all see eye to eye on, so there were some votes. My question is, is this a recommendation of the entire task group? Did they vote on this to recommend it, or where did that, is this unanimous? Did they not vote on that? And if they didn't vote on the entirety, what were the issues that they did vote on where they disagreed?
Mr. Sable.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Nelson. So the, where the task force had some disagreement, and I'll look to Mr. Zuniga to help, but it, so the, the task force itself recommended this ordinance for approval. There were a couple of elements that there was, you have to make a choice about how we're going to consider fee structure, how we're going to figure out the, the size of an employer, whether or not we have a private right of action as an element. And so when there was a disagreement, there was a vote and the direction was there. But I think the task force would say that the process played out. They would stand by it. It might not have been exactly what they wanted, but as the art of all compromise, that was an element that they knew that the charge was to bring something forward for consideration or recommendation, and the task force came forward with that recommendation.
Thank you. Do we have any idea what impact this ordinance will have on city staffing or city budgets? Will we need to add additional staff to handle this?
Mr. Veroggi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. We have forecasted for the council last or during the budget process that we're probably looking at two additional FTE and legal, one that is an attorney and one that is more at a paralegal level.
Thank you. I think my last question for right now, in this, it was, I think Councilmember De Lysandro had, had mentioned this last time about working with people, and I know Mr. Lysandro had, had mentioned this last time about working with people, and I know Mr. Sable mentioned this tonight, businesses to make sure they come into compliance without getting fined after an initial first violation. So two questions on that. One, it says first year after effective date. How does that apply to like a new business? If someone starts a company up in four years from now, and maybe they aren't familiar that this ordinance is available and they violate it, is there any flexibility with regards to them? The second part of that question is, that would not preclude the employee from getting what they deserved. If they took time off to take an elderly parent or a kid to the doctor and were not paid for that, they'd still be entitled to compensation for that time if they had earned it. Is that, does that make sense? And is that accurate?
Mayor, councilmembers, councilmember Nelson, that's correct, that they would still have the ability to do that. In terms of, I think there was a question, and if I, if you were talking about sort of the enforcement level and the desire to have education and outreach is to be a certain, an important element of that. The city of Minneapolis has some data regarding their implementation of this ordinance dating back to 2017. And I will note that most of the questions and the enforcement actions took place in those early years, and so the number of inquiries have gone down over time. Since July of 2017, there have been 476 sick and safe time violation cases filed, and two-thirds of those resulted in no settlement or judgment. So it was either an education to the employer that, hey, you know, this is a rule and this is how you follow it. And so of those, there were only 151 ordered judgments out of 476. And so, I'm sorry, there were 151 settled agreements and 10 ordered judgments. So by and large, that what we, what we wound up seeing in the city of Minneapolis was essentially a negotiation between the employer, the city, and the employee on the implementation phase. So I think the intent in, in our certainly implementation of this would be to do education and outreach in a robust way and actually take the lessons from the creation of the ordinance to really create a more intentional and robust engagement over the next year or 18 months to make sure that it's a successful implementation that includes a broader representative from not only the chamber but specific businesses.
Counsel, any additional questions? Are these specific to this? Can they wait until after the public hearing? Or are these specific on prior to public hearing kind of questions? Okay. Very good. With that, this is a public hearing, and we will open our public hearing now. This is item 4.4. It's a public hearing on the earned sick and safe leave ordinance. And we've got a number of folks who would like to speak, and a number of folks actually called ahead of time, and looking at Mr. Hoagie here, who called and asked if he could speak to us ahead of time. So please do come forward, Mr. Hoagie. And just to let everyone know, we will have the five-minute shot clock working here just to make sure that we can get through everybody in the, in the audience who would like to speak. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, city staff. I'm Rich Hoagie. I'm the Executive Vice President from All of America. And I thank you for allowing me to share some thoughts on this. We do appreciate the open discussion that's around this important topic. I'd also like to thank all of you for the, the work that you put in on so many important issues just like this. Like, like you guys, we all believe this is a critical issue for many in our society. But we also feel like the business community was not adequately, adequately involved in the shaping of this policy. We understand that moving this issue forward during a pandemic could not have been easy, but it's important to involve the key stakeholders, like Bloomington's business community. In fact, from the task force meeting minutes of November 22nd, 2021, the members expressed some concern that the number of responses were very small and underwhelming relative to the number of businesses in Bloomington. And to be clear, we are not opposed to a policy such as this. But as a large employer and a site of more than 500 businesses, we are asking for a chance to be in the conversation. We'd respectfully ask the council to take some additional time, approximately six weeks or more, in order to reach out to the businesses of all sizes in Bloomington and to get some constructive feedback. We'd be happy to help you get input from many of our tenants at Mall of America. In fact, our next tenant meeting is scheduled for May 5th, and we'd invite you to come and address the issue to build awareness within the business, businesses that would be directly impacted. I think working together, we can all be able to fine tune this ordinance to best needs the needs of all. And that, that's all we wanted to say. We want to thank you guys for your time. And again, we do appreciate the effort that you guys are putting forth on these issues. They're very important to the, to the city of Bloomington, to our larger community. We're here to work together on it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoagie. Mr. Brillet, remind me here, did anyone else call ahead of time?
Yes, Mayor, we had Wade Lunberg who was going to call in.
Riza, do we have Wade Lunberg on the phone calling in on this issue? Item 4.4.
If you wish to join the public comment, please press star one on your telephone keypad. We have a public commenter that, and she is Chelsea Globit. Do you want me to open her line?
We were looking first, I think, for Mr. Lunberg.
Mr. Wade, would you please press star one on your telephone keypad? Yes, he's on the line, but he's not pressing star one.
All right, why don't we, let's, we'll double back, we'll check back with you in just a moment if we could. I know we've got a number of folks here in the council chambers who are looking to speak. I don't think we've had anyone else call ahead, so anyone interested in speaking on this topic, item 4.4, please come, come forward now, and if you could state your name and sign in on this. Yep, please, come on in.
Hello?
Good evening, welcome.
First, I'm sorry because my primary language is Spanish, so I'm trying to, thank you, City Council's President and members of Bloomington City Council.
Could I ask you one second? If you could just identify yourself, so we know your name?
My name is Eva Lopez, and I'm a retail cleaner, retail store cleaner here in Bloomington, and I'm a member of SEIU Local 26. SEIU Local 26 is a Minnesota Properties Service Union, which bring, bring together more than 8,000 janitors, security officers, and property service worker in the Twin Cities metro area. I'm here to speak in support of earned sick and safe time. SEIU Local 26 members are primarily people of color and immigrants, and our members are often the most directly affected by earned and sick safe time because we are expected to come in even when we are not feeling well. We believe that now is time to support workers in Bloomington. Earned sick and time and safe time has already passed in three cities in Minnesota, St. Paul, Minneapolis, and Duluth, and in cities and states across the country. We need to train to continue in the city of Bloomington. Workers who do not have time, sick, earned, sick, and safe time, often we have to wonder whether or not to take the day off when we aren't feeling well. Often, I will choose to take the day off when I'm not feeling well, and even when I'm not taking care of myself. This also would have benefited and saved lives during the beginning of the pandemic. As an, as an essential workers, I put my life in danger every day in order to make sure that Minnesota could run at a base level. Over 1,000 of my fellow SEIU members tested positive for COVID-19. Often, they will come into work because they cannot afford to take, take them off, of work. Limiting the spread of contagious illness improves public health and benefits everyone. Had we had earned, safe, and sick time, my fellow SEIU Local 26 member who died of COVID-19 might still be alive today. Earned, sick, and safe time provides workers the opportunity to live with dignity. Additionally, earned, sick, and safe time helps level the playing field across the businesses by allowing small businesses to provide competitive benefits while supporting work with dignity, which is, is good for employees' retention and productivity as good of, of business. Thank you again, Sarah, for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you. And if we could get you to sign in, actually, with the, there's a clipboard, if we could just get you to sign in, so we have you officially for the record. Thank you so much. I believe Mr. Lunberg is now on the line. Riza, is Mr. Lunberg on the line now?
I will open his line.
Local 17, Minnesota's Hospitality Union. It was my pleasure to serve on the ESSL Task Force along with other interested stakeholders. The task force was charged with, quote, "to make decisions by consensus and produce a recommended ordinance that all members can support." I think we accomplished that in the draft language you see tonight. This important policy will go a long way in providing comfort and safety to the workers and the residents of Bloomington. I believe coming out of the pandemic, there's never been a more, a better demonstration of why good policy like this is important. In 2016, I participated on a similar panel for earned sick and safe time ordinance in Minneapolis and was struck then by a lens on public health that included food and airborne illnesses, but even contemplated a potential pandemic in the future. To that end, the Minneapolis and St. Paul ordinances have been remarkably successful for workers and businesses. The ability to have access to earned sick and safe time without falling behind helps all workers. Workers are sick, workers who are sick or have a family member that might be ill, have a child experiencing an emergency at school or home, will now with confidence be able to address those needs without concern for lost time and wages and without retaliation. This policy now sets a level playing field between municipal jurisdictions and is good for businesses too, leading to higher retention rates and productivity and a better line of competitiveness. Tonight, I'd also like to call on the council and the mayor to keep this work going. This template of service to the city could and should be in the future, act as Bloomington's workforce and community continues to grow, a good template to good policy. As a member of the task force, I was impressed with the city's staff and their willingness to think out of the box. There was a constant lens on equity and inclusion, a public health imperative, and for an enforcement infrastructure that will work for workers and the residents of Bloomington. Again, this process was a good one. I hope that we'll see consensus tonight in a final vote for at the council and final passage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lunberg. Riza, do we have anyone else on the line who wishes to speak to item 4.4?
Yes, we have the line of Chelsea. Your line is open.
Thank you. My name is Chelsea Globitz-Gabbi. I am president at the Minneapolis Regional Labor Federation of the ASL CIO, and we are a regional body that represents workers throughout the region. Over 4,500 members just in the city of Bloomington, plus thousands more who work within the city of Bloomington who will be impacted by this ordinance. We really appreciate the work and thoughtfulness of this committee to carry out this level of engagement during the height of the pandemic, where, as many speakers before me have highlighted, that we have witnessed the true urgency of these types of protections and labor standards. Bloomington is an economic driver for our entire, our entire region, so the added participation of Bloomington, along with these other municipalities to develop these labor standards, is critical for the success of this, both for business owners and for employers. So I really appreciate the attention to detail and the ability to make this work for all. We fully support the proposed ordinance, and we look forward to a future that includes a robust implementation process. You know, building on the success of the process that you've already began and was highlighted over the last couple of years. We do encourage you to obviously pass this ordinance, but we also want to make sure that a formal and permanent space is developed for this work going forward, because while this is a great policy, if we aren't working together throughout the community to enforce it, and like when we say enforcement, we mean educate folks, make people feel empowered, it's just not going to work for Bloomington families. So this is like an all hands-on-deck enforcement. You know, you've done the first part here where you had to develop a really good policy, and now the next phase will be talking about that future going forward. And I'll just say, like, what technical thing? I know there's other people on the line, and I don't know if they know exactly how to get in the queue to provide testimony, so I just wanted to put that on there before I, I close out. But thank you, everyone, for your time. Thank you, everyone, for your leadership.
Thank you, Ms. Globitz. Riza, do we have others on the line for item 4.4?
Again, please press star one on your telephone keypad to join the public comment. Ms. Jean Ross, your line is open.
Hello?
Good evening.
My name is Jean Ross, and I live at 10209 Chicago Circle. As Minnesotans, we care deeply about each other. No matter where we live, we're united by the aspirations we share and the love we have for our families. Every person has inherent worth and dignity, but too many working people are left behind, and they're forced to make impossible economic choices. As a registered nurse who lives in Bloomington, I want to express nurses' strong commitment to the health and economic well-being of families and working people in this city and across Minnesota. The COVID crisis has shown a spotlight on the underlying weaknesses and inequities in Minnesota's economy. Far too many families, particularly families of color, lack the support needed to care for their loved ones or themselves when they need it most. Together, we can build a family-friendly economy for all Minnesotans and emerge stronger from this public health crisis. As a member of the Minnesota Nurses Association, we want to voice our support for earned sick and safe time, a basic employment standard that allows workers to accrue paid time to care for themselves or a loved one. For thousands of Minnesotans, earned sick and safe time provides flexibility so they can meet their highest responsibilities. It ensures people can live and work with dignity, taking our parents to the doctor's office to get test results, getting a COVID test, resting when illness strikes instead of working a double, picking up a sick child when the nurse's office calls in the middle of our shift, leaving our abuser to get safety or court protection. It shouldn't cost us so much to balance work and life. No working person, particularly essential workers, who are making our society function during this pandemic, should have to worry about taking care of themselves or a loved one and missing a paycheck or getting fired. We're better off when everyone has the tools they need to build a good life. Guaranteeing that every working person in Bloomington has access to paid time to care for themselves and loved ones is one of those necessary tools. Earned, sick, and safe time is also good for public health and small Earned, sick, and safe time is also good for public health and small businesses. It limits the spread of contagious illnesses and levels the playing field for employers. Together, we can build a family-friendly economy and build on local and national progress. Three cities in Minnesota, Minneapolis, St. Paul, and Duluth, have already passed common sense Earn Sick and Safe Time ordinances. Across the country, 13 states have passed ESSL law. Let's honor hard work and choose a better, healthier future for all residents of Bloomington. It's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Riza, is there anyone else on the line wishing to speak to item 4.4?
Yes, next is Rebecca Nelson. Your line is open.
Good evening, Mayor. Council, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Becky Nelson. I'm also a registered nurse and a member of the Minnesota Nurses Association. I'm employed by a local hospital group. I live in southwest Bloomington on 5225 Overlook Drive. I work in a local post anesthesia care unit, also known as the PACU, also known as the recovery room, where we care for patients after they come out of surgery. And I'm just going to talk a little bit about how this ordinance would affect my working conditions and my patients. The PACU is staffed by a team of nurses, anesthesiologists, and support service, who are specifically trained to deal with the unique needs of the post-surgical patient. In the recovery room, your nurse reviews your current and past medical conditions. You'd be given a physical assessment, monitoring, an EKG, a pulse oximeter, vital signs. Your recovery room nurse will check your dressings or bandages, give you pain control if needed, and will address other concerns that you have as a post-operative patient. Every effort is taken by the recovery room team to make your stay in the hospital, regardless of how long it is, an overnight or just a day surgery, as comfortable and as pleasant as possible, but recovery from surgery takes time, both inside the hospital and at home. Earned, sick, and safe time would allow patients and their families the time they need to care for themselves and for each other. This time would be especially valuable for some of my most vulnerable patients as they recover. I often have day surgery patients that are ready to be discharged after a first case surgery in the morning, but because their loved ones cannot take time off of work, the patients sit and wait in the hospital until they're off of work until 4:00 or 5:00 p.m. These patients are ready to go home and be in their own bed. Because we don't provide full meals for day surgeries, generally, these recovering patients miss a meal as a result. Delays in patients heading home can also impact other patients, because a nurse remains assigned to that patient. This can take time away from our ability to stay focused on the patients that need or care more critically, and it's simply because family can't take time away from their work. Additionally, if a family member can't be at the bedside with their loved one on the day of their surgery, nurses end up taking on the responsibility of keeping loved ones updated on the patient's condition. And this takes valuable time away from direct care of our patients by spending extra time on the phone that we would not normally have to. If the families of patients had access to ESSL, they would be able to take the time to learn about the patient's condition and care plan face-to-face and help the patient get home safely in a timely fashion, and it would free up nursing hours to tend for other patients. Families need earned, sick, and safe time to be able to care for their families and themselves when they need it the most. Nobody should have to face the impossible decision of taking care of a loved one in the hospital or providing for their family on the job. Everyone deserves access to earn, sick, and safe time to care for their children and family members. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Riza, anyone else on the line?
Again, if you wish to join the public comment, please press star one on your telephone keypad. We have Grace Walts on the line. Your line is open.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Grace Walts, and I am the vice president of Public Policy at the Minneapolis Regional Chamber. The Minneapolis Regional Chamber and the Bloomington Chamber appreciated the opportunity to participate in Bloomington's Sick and Safe Leave Task Force and are grateful to the city of Bloomington's staff and council members for giving us the opportunity to share our perspective on this important issue. From the beginning, our priority has been to make sure a new Sick and Safe Leave Ordinance does not contribute to creating a confusing patchwork of Sick and Safe Leave ordinances across the greater MSP region, causing regulatory hurdles for our employers and members, many of which already provide these important benefits to their employees. From that standpoint, we've advocated for Bloomington to model their ordinance to mirror the Minneapolis ordinance as much as possible. We previously expressed our opinion on two items left unresolved when the task force completed its work. First, in order to make compliance less burdensome for employers operating in multiple jurisdictions, we've urged the council to adopt an ordinance that mirrors the Minneapolis exemption for small businesses with five employees or less. The application of this mandate to employers of this size would drastically increase the scope and impact of the mandate on Bloomington's small businesses, and we are grateful to see this exemption reflected in the updated ordinance. Second, I want to note that we had also advocated for exempting seasonal workers from the ordinance. The retail industry is a major employer in Bloomington, and we urge the task force to recognize the significant impact providing paid Sick and Safe Leave to temporary seasonal workers would have on retailers who were hardest hit by the COVID-19 pandemic. Once again, we are grateful for the opportunity to have our perspective represented as this ordinance was drafted, and we appreciate the opportunity to work towards an outcome that improves the lives of residents while also maintaining a strong business climate in Bloomington and look forward to additional engagement as this ordinance is implemented. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walts. Riza, additional callers?
No more callers. Please continue.
Thank you. No more callers. Folks here in the council chambers, like to speak on this? Anyone like to come forward? Please.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity. My name is John Steigoff. I'm a directing business representative with the Machinists Union and a longtime member, or resident, I should say, of Bloomington here living right over on Pleasant Avenue. I would rise to speak in favor of item 4.4. My organization represents folks across the state, including Minneapolis, St. Paul, and Duluth. And personally, I can say that I've seen some remarkable things that this ordinance can do for both my members and for future people that could actually benefit from this. I think a lot of folks that spoke before me have told you most things that I would say. I would just encourage you all to take a good, hard look at this and pass this if we could. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steigoff. Others wish to speak? Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Dustin Schallenberger. Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I'm a small business owner inside the Mall of America, and I'd just like to say I agree with Rich Hoag. As a small business owner, we didn't hear anything about this until the last couple of days, right? So you just throw this bill right on our table, and we're like, what's going on? So it's almost like it happened that way for a reason, so we don't have to see this, but there's a lot of things in here that are pretty confusing to us as a small business. It impacts us pretty good, and I just wanted to put forth that, you know, giving us some time, talking with the small business owners, I feel like we should have got something in the mail, a piece of paper, or something that kind of showed us what's going to happen, what it, you know? I'm not opposed to the bill by any means, giving the employees paid time off and sick time or whatever. I just think that it, you know, we should ask the people who it affects, not just the ones that we're hearing today that are going to get the time off, but we should also ask the business owners. There's a lot of logistics that happens with this that has not been mentioned as far as how we track all of this. There's a lot of moving parts here. It's like almost one day per week, per person, or for a manager, just to pay attention to all this stuff. So I just wanted to come forth and say that I think we should pause for a minute, take a step back, take a look at all the businesses that are inside the community, and ask them what's going to benefit their staff and their, you know, employees the most. So thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Others?
Good evening, Mr. Clark. Hello, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm here to speak in opposition to the ESSL ordinance, and I'm going to just summarize my comments around three Ps: process, policy, and political considerations. First thing is process. That's been mentioned here already several times. This task force was put together with a number of members that don't represent, truly represent the Bloomington business community. There is only one small business member here on this list of members. There's multiple Fortune 500 companies. There's several special interest groups. There's groups on here that I don't even understand why they're on here, and there's even a Minneapolis business called Butter Bakery that's on your website that's supposedly representing Bloomington businesses. That I don't understand. One of the intentions, it says the recommended ordinance is intended to promote and protect the well-being of Bloomington workforce, while we all want that. There's no question about that. And there's a number of other things here, balancing the unique needs and circumstances of Bloomington employers. But then it says at the end, be as clear and understandable and uncomplicated as feasible for both employers and employees. This ordinance does not meet that test. If I take this 14-page ordinance and take the pages and stack them end to end, it would go from here to Mr. Loman. This is a long, complicated ordinance that is going to be tough for you to enforce, and it's going to be very tough for small businesses. So from a process standpoint, I think this really lacked in a lot of different ways. I don't know of one public town hall where people could come to and answer questions face-to-face with the task force. It just left a lot to be desired. So from a process standpoint, you know, I have a real problem with this. From a policy standpoint, do we need an ordinance like this in Bloomington? The answer is no. Why? Because the private sector is already taking care of this. For the last year, you may have heard of this thing called the Great Resignation. And the Great Resignation is where, is a phenomenon where millions of people have been quitting their jobs to go to better-paying jobs, jobs with better benefits, better work-from-home policies. In fact, Fortune magazine just last week said that in the previous six months from today, over four and a half million people per month have quit their jobs for better situations, and that includes ESSL policies. So I have nothing against ESSL. In fact, the company I work for has a great ESSL program. But the 48% of businesses in Bloomington that do not have this, the estimated 48% that was cited, that do not have a policy like this, are the ones that can least afford it. They're the ones that do not have a policy because they least afford it, and that's the risk that they take. If an employer doesn't want to have a policy like this, they run the risk of losing those employees to employers that do. That's the free market working to shift things around, and that's what people are doing. The Great Resignation is already taking care of this problem. People are flocking to different situations that are better for them and for their family. The third thing, the third P, so we have process, policy, and then political considerations. You know, do you really want to be known as the city council and the mayor that pass anti-business ordinances? Because this is not the first anti-business ordinance that you've passed, and so I'd ask you to consider that as well. You know, businesses have enough problem turning a profit and paying for expenses as it is, with COVID, rising costs, labor shortages, supply chain issues, and now comes this on top of them to have to deal with as well. So there's nothing wrong with the SSL, but let the private sector take care of it. There's no reason for the city to come in and establish a complicated policy that is only going to become a bureaucratic nightmare, not only for the employers, but for the city as well. And as far as adding more staff, you know, what's that going to cost us? Another $200,000 in pay and benefits for an attorney and a, you know, and somebody else? That's unacceptable in a time of reduced expenses and income shortages for the city. So I'm in opposition of the ordinance. I'm not in opposition of ESSL. I think it's a great program. I stand behind the workers, the people that are there to help us, but let the private sector take care of this. They do a great job. The private sector is best suited to deal with issues like this and not a heavy-handed sledgehammer approach to small businesses, and that's what this is. So I am in opposition to it. I know a lot of others are as well. I wish more had spoken out against this, because this is not a good proposal. It's not a good ordinance. And at minimum, you need to go back, like the others have said, the gentleman from the Mall of America, two folks from the Mall of America have said, is to go back and hold some town halls. Face the people. Face those business owners. Answer the questions.
Mr. Clark, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak? Good evening. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Tom Wortman. I also am a business owner in the Mall of America, and this is something that I just found about, out about late Friday. And I just reiterate the aspect of what Rich Hoagie has said, Dustin has said. The aspect of understanding this is important. We have approximately 60 employees. We have about a dozen to 14 that are full-time. The rest of them are part-time. Lot of high school, college-age kids. The situation that we're facing after coming out of this pandemic and the COVID hospitality business, restaurant, entertainment, has been really tough. What this means to our company, as I'm doing analysis, if the 48 hours, based on the current level of pay, which used to be, two years ago, it was minimum wage, or $12 or $14 an hour, now we're at like $16, $18, $20, $22, is where we're sitting, just to find workers and to be able to be fair, trying to work through, trying to maintain them. This is about a $50,000 expense that's just out of the blue from trying to cover 48 hours if everybody takes their 48 hours. By the time you pay your taxes on that, 20 bucks, it's not 20 bucks, it's 23 bucks, and you multiply that times a 48, now you're over $1,050, $1,100 bucks, times 50 employees, it adds up quick. Now, if that 48 hours goes to 80 hours, now it's, we're talking 100 grand. The bottom line just isn't there in the businesses. You can't charge enough for a burger anymore. You can't charge enough for the entertainment to be able to do it. So I would just ask, and again, nothing against quality for people, et cetera, it's just a matter of how do we track this? How do we try to maintain it? I don't feel that there's been business input, at least from the knowledge that we've got, and being able to try and have some input on that. I would just ask that you do take some time to have some of the business leaders be able to side in. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Riza, is there anyone on the line who wishes to speak to item 4.4?
Yes, we have Elise, yes, we have Elise Valderrama on the line. Your line is open.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Elise Valderrama. I live in District 3 in Bloomington, and first of all, I want to say thank you for offering the call-in option to provide comments at public hearings. It makes council meetings more accessible for people to join remotely, given our variety of work and life schedules. I'm calling to the public hearing today to demonstrate my support for the city of Bloomington's Earned, Sick, and Safe Leave Ordinance. I strongly believe that government policies can drive beneficial improvements in health, wellness, and economic development. Local policies like this are especially important when we don't have national universal health policies like this one. I know we value our employment sectors, our retail, entertainment, and hospitality sectors. sectors. I was looking at the Mall of America's Health and Sanitation Plan on the mall's website. The plan reads, "The health and safety of our employees and guests are our number-one priority. And if employees are sick, they should not come to work." So, as a Bloomington resident, I want to know that the places where I do business and places I recommend to others provide sick and safe time to their employees. People from all over the United States and the world come to the mall, and we want to attract visitors to come and stay in Bloomington hotels for leisure or business. The city of Bloomington and its employers can be a role model for policies like the Sick and Safe Time Ordinance. And this policy is a way to show support for well-being of all people who live, work, and play in Bloomington. And as others have mentioned, this is a great way for employers to help attract and retain talented people into Bloomington jobs. And especially important to me, policies like this demonstrate Bloomington's commitment to racial equity and to address racism as a public health crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Riza, anyone else on the line for item 4.4?
No further public comment. Please continue.
Last call for anybody here in the council chambers? Counsel, we've got no one on the line and no one coming forward here in the chambers. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.4.
So moved.
Second?
Got a motion by Councilmember Loman, a second by Councilmember Coulter to close the public hearing on item 4.4. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. So, counsel, we have this in front of us, and we have a number of suggestions and possibilities in front of us as well. And interested to hear ideas or suggestions if we move forward, or if we look to take that additional time, perhaps, to gather feedback from businesses who may not have been heard, may not have been able to participate in the first place. I'm open for suggestions. And I will say the implementation of this, we're a year out from implementation right now. Working, adding an extra couple of weeks to gather more input would not be a devastating thing is what, is just my thought on this. We would have the opportunity to do so. So, just a thought. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I would wholeheartedly agree with you. I think that we heard from people that they felt that this kind of came up on them, and, you know, we hear that sometimes. And I know our staff does a job trying to get that information out there, but I appreciate Mr. Sable's candor that maybe we could have done a better job, and that's on us as leadership here. So, I would, I would be comfortable giving the timeframe to engage with businesses that want to be engaged in this and see if there's anything that through this process we've missed to make it better and more workable. I think there's a little bit of variance between ours and Minneapolis and St. Paul in making it easier to implement. Ultimately, if that's the direction that we want to go, I think is good for people. So, and I also appreciate those that came forward with that concern, that they're not closed-minded about it, that they're like, hey, let's, let's take a look at this. Let's see if it makes sense and if it's workable. So, I think, I think the approach is appropriate on both sides here. So, I appreciate that.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, I would agree that, you know, a few weeks is not the, the end of the world. I guess, from my perspective, given that this is a year out from implementation, and I will tell you, I have heard from folks with other, not necessarily specifics, but that, that other folks have sort of technical, perhaps, changes that they would like to see. But I would also point out that in, within this ordinance, it does provide the city attorney's office with rulemaking authority with regards to implementation and that sort of thing. And it does specifically state that any rules shall be published, maintained, and made available to the public at least 90 days prior to their effective date. And revisions to publish rules shall be published, maintained, and made available to the public at least 30 days prior to their effective date. So, I would say, you know, given, in addition to that year timeframe and the rulemaking authority and that timeframe that's laid out within that rulemaking authority, I, you know, certainly I agree gathering additional feedback is good. And I, you know, I will certainly, you know, concede readily, in developing this ordinance, yes, we absolutely should have consulted with the Mall of America. There is, there is absolutely no reason we should not have done that. I, I am of the opinion, and staff can certainly correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong about this, that that feedback could be appropriately gathered and synthesized and all of that, such that if there were, I'm suspecting the, you know, to the extent there would be any changes, they would be largely technical or, you know, administrative rather than to the sort of the substance of the policy itself. I, I am of the opinion that that could probably be accomplished, you know, with such that, you know, any revisions could come before the city council, you know, six months or three months or whatever it is before this, and I, the effective date is April 1st of 2023. So, literally a year. I, I would like to think that that's enough time for folks to come together and bring forward changes, such that anything could come forward, that the council could adopt it and maintain that April 1st effective date. So, I, I would, I would say, given, given that, that timeframe and that ability, I think there, with the ordinance as it stands now, if we were to adopt it tonight, that, that, that activity and any of those changes could come forward, that, that, to me, that timeframe would still work out.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Martin, and then councilmember Loman. Councilmember Martin?
Just briefly, kind of looking at the timeline that was presented a bit in the presentation here. So, the 11 public meetings about this, but I know we've been talking about this generally since probably June of 2018, this was coming up at study sessions. So, I know it's been in the air, it's been in the briefing, I've gotten e-alerts about it. So, I wonder if it's also an opportunity, considering how much of our bandwidth, or how this has been on our mind, as we're reaching out to the businesses on this, can we also be asking them, how can we reach you? Because this has been on our radar for a long, long time. And I certainly don't doubt folks feel like this kind of jumped up and bit them a little bit. I, I would like to leverage this to say, okay, how can we do better next time? Because this, every time we have a big project, this comes up.
That's a good point, councilmember. Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor and council. You know, listening to this, a little bit confused when I heard the Minneapolis and Bloomington chamber make the statement that, you know, they were a part of the process as well. And I'm just confused that that communication didn't get to the Bloomington businesses. So, that seems very, it's very strange to me that that, that didn't happen. And I don't want to bring that in. You know, I certainly agree that, you know, that we've got a rulemaking process here. But I think, given the fact that we have, you know, a substantial employer that have sent emails and have contacted us, now, I don't think I can wait six weeks. I think that's just way too long, you know, given the process here. So, I would, I would ask, is there any way to move that meeting up, you know, a couple of, a couple of weeks that the Mall of America had, had mentioned? Is there a faster way that that could be done so that this could be tightened up within a couple of weeks? And then, then vote on it. Because I would hate to see something substantial that was missed. I somehow can't believe that would be missed, to go through a rulemaking process, because that's just not something I've ever seen us do. So, I don't know. I would feel comfortable as a councilmember tonight passing this and then letting anything of major concern go through that process. And I'm not comfortable with the six-week period of time. I think two weeks, maybe a month, would be something I'd be a little more. And there's a couple other items that I have that I want to make sure that gets in there. So, I've got some other questions here.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. To Councilmember Loman's point in terms of the timeframe of six weeks versus two weeks or whatever, what impact would that have on the implementation date? If we took two weeks, would we still be able to do April 1st of 2023? If we took six weeks, would we still be able to do April 1st of 2023? Would, would either of those really materially impact when this would be effective?
Mr. Sable?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, the task force talked about the implementation period, and I won't get the timing exactly right, but I know that the Minneapolis, St. Paul, and Duluth had varying durations for implementation so they could do more direct outreach. The one component that the businesses requested was that it be at a end of a quarter or the start of a quarter, so it didn't mess with, you know, quarterly payments to the IRS or changes to the payroll system. And so, they really operated and requested that whatever it, whatever the timeframe be, that it coincided with the financial quarter.
If I could, Mayor, just a quick follow-up. If we waited the six weeks, would we have enough time for education and implementation if we waited until mid-May?
So, would April 1st still be a possibility? How far out could we go and have April 1st still be a possibility? Mr. Brugge?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, we do have the staffing issue to consider as well, and when we'll have the resources on staff, because the, you know, the couple positions that we're talking about are going to be instrumental in doing the outreach and the education information with the, with the affected businesses. And so, the delay in adoption, I think, would probably suggest we have a little bit of a delay in implementation. So, instead of April 1st, maybe a July 1st, consistent with keeping it on a quarterly schedule, as Mr. Sable suggested. So, you know, we'd want some direction from the council in that regard, because we will have to bring back a budget amendment at some point and have a discussion about how we handle the compliance issue. I also want to say that the two people that we're talking about aren't just exclusive for this. There are some other issues that we talked to the council about during the budget that they'll also be working on. We've just been holding them in abeyance here until we got through this issue as well. So, there's that consideration. And the other, the other point that I'd like to make and just, would be helpful for staff, if we do take some additional time and try to do some additional engagement, is to be real specific about what you want us to engage on. Is it for specific technical or rule-making elements of the ordinance? Or is it specific to more substantive policy elements of the ordinance? Because I think it's, for our outreach folks who are going to be working on this, helpful to know when they are engaging with the businesses. If we do do that, what specifically we are asking of them and what expectation we can set for the information that we're going to get from them.
Does that make sense, counsel? Councilmember Coulter?
Well, I guess, you know, to that point, Mayor, I, I guess, I mean, you know, I guess what I'm, what I'm struggling with here is to the point that the city manager just brought up. Because if we are, if we are indeed talking about more substantive changes to the ordinance, I, I mean, that to me, I mean, we appointed the task force for a purpose, right? We appointed the task force. And I would also point out, I'm going to try to contain my frustration, but it is absolutely not true that there was not business representation on this task force. We had representation from Health Partners, which is a significant employer, not only within the state of Minnesota, but within the city of Bloomington. As was noted, we had representation from the Minneapolis Regional Chamber, the Bloomington Chamber. There were small business owners on the task force, as well as someone working with the Main Street Alliance, which is an organization of small business owners. So, I think it is just flatly not true to say that, that there was not business representation on this task force. You know, you're, certainly folks are free to disagree with the conclusions and the recommendations that the task force came to. By all means, that is the nature of, of policy discussions. But I think we need to be clear about that. And so, if we are, if we are talking about more substantive changes, then it seems to me we would be rejecting the work of the task force in the first place. And we would be, I would also add, sort of discarding the lengthy policy discussions that we as a city council had on this ordinance. And, you know, there are always things we can nitpick. There are things that I would like to see changed in this ordinance as well. But I, it, I'm, I am frustrated because, you know, there is, as I said, I think the substance of the ordinance is strong. I think it is good. Is it perfect? No. But if that's the kind of change we're looking to make, then that to me suggests a longer period of time. If we are talking about technical changes, if we are talking about clarifying how enforcement takes place, or how tracking takes place, or whatever that does, you know, again, I, you know, there is the rulemaking process. I agree, you know, if it is something significant, it shouldn't be part of the rulemaking process. And I will tell you, in my day job, I deal with state rulemaking processes on a, a not irregular basis. But if we're talking about technical ordinance changes, I just fail to see how that cannot, cannot be accomplished such that, you know, in the next few weeks or within the few months, we can come back with a sort of technical, you know, revision to this particular ordinance to address some of those concerns. I, I guess I'm just not clear what, you know, the, the folks that we've heard from tonight, you know, we don't need to reopen the public hearing, but it's not clear to me what the folks we've heard from tonight are looking for. Because, like I said, I think those technical things, and I, again, I've heard from other folks with technical changes they'd like to see too. Those can be accomplished within this timeframe with what we have before us. If we are talking about more substantive changes, you know, we have been talking about this, I brought this up, I remember, at our last in-person meeting before the pandemic shut everything down, I brought this up. And we have talked about this many, 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 many times. We've had the opportunity for us as a council to weigh in on a policy of this ordinance. And I, I, it just feels a little bit to me like we're trying to move the goalposts. And I think, you know, we can always nitpick, we can always make changes. I would like to see this move forward tonight.
Councilmember Loman?
Oh, Mayor, certainly I hear that. And when you have your, one of your major employers saying, hey, you know, they've got some, either substantive or, you know, technical rulemaking pieces that, that they bring forward, that, as a policymaker, gives me pause, especially when staff makes the statement that they feel like they could have done a better job from an engagement standpoint. I'm frankly confused with the standpoint that we have a Bloomington chamber, a Minneapolis chamber there. So, I assumed, when that came before the body, that that conversation was taking place and happening there. I know that Councilmember Coulter and I have had conversations with the Mall of America about this. So, I know that this couldn't have been a surprise. But that, that still remains. For myself, I'm trying to understand why April 1st cannot still be made if we were to open it up and let, on a quicker clip. So, I think the mall can certainly, and other folks could get together in a quicker period of time, if this is important to them, and get something to this body within a, in a month and still be able to make that April 1st deadline. I don't, I just don't understand why we couldn't make that April 1st deadline. So, that's where I'm at today. I don't know if other councilmembers feel the same way, or that they're okay with a major employer in the, in the city of Bloomington feeling that they're not informed and they want to move forward. Certainly, this councilmember has a problem with it.
So, I appreciate your comments. I appreciate all the comments. And I think it's an important clarification. When we're talking about the Mall of America, yes, it's a major employer. The Mall of America is a major employer. 555 is a major employer with the folks who work at Nickelodeon Universe, who work in the, on the custodial staff, who work in security. They're a major employer. But there are also 500 small employers at the Mall of America. So, when we talk about the Mall of America, we have to remember that there are 500 small businesses basically at the Mall of America. And, and small businesses ranging from the kiosks of two or three people who work at the kiosks up and up to, now, granted, Macy's, I wouldn't call a small employer, but you, I mean, you get, you get my, you get my drift here, that these are, these are folks. And it concerns me that we've heard from folks who are among that group of 500 small employers who feel they haven't been heard on this. And I, I think, I think it's important that we, we hear from them. And now, I appreciate your frustration, Councilmember Coulter. I don't feel like it's moving the goalposts. I think it's, it's gaining more information. And I think it would be an important thing to do. If it does result in substantive changes, we need to have that discussion because we have lacked the input of 500 small businesses in the city of Bloomington. Are they represented by the Bloomington, or Bloomington Chamber of Commerce? In my time on the Chamber of Commerce, a lot of times, the mall businesses did not belong to the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, because they didn't have time to go to Chamber of Commerce stuff. They were working all the time. And they were, they were spending time in their shops and in their retail outlets. And so, and I think our friends on the chamber would, would agree with that, that they, they don't see, they- they, they don't see, they probably have membership, or some may have membership in the Chamber, but they aren't necessarily involved and engaged as they probably could or should be. So, timing-wise, it, I don't know, I don't know if I'd want to move, ask the, the mall to move their tenant meeting up. I think it's probably on the books months in advance to make sure that everybody can get there. I don't know if we want to push this off, however many months, if we, you know, if we went into the summer, could we still get this up by April 1st? I mean, we, we, we challenge our staff all the time to do tough things like that. And so I think it's possible. I don't know. And to ask exactly what we want, I think, A, number one, I think we want to inform people. We want people to know what we're talking about here and what we're, what is being proposed and how it would impact them. And I think to gain some of that feedback. Okay, this is what's going to happen. How would it affect you? How, how would it impact your bottom line? How would it, you know, what would happen with your employers? What would happen with everything from A to Z, I think? So I, I don't know if that helps to answer the question of staff, what we would be looking for, but I think those would be the things we'd be looking for. I'd look for additional thoughts on that as well. Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have a couple of thoughts that kind of come together to answer your question, if you'll give me just a little bit of latitude, because I promise, it won't be boring. So, so the first thing I'd like to mention is, first off, thank you to the people who represent the various workers that we are trying to support here. It is important to acknowledge that our nurses and our, and our custodial staffs and, and our service workers have kept the lights on for Bloomington throughout this pandemic. And, and they are the most impacted, if you look at any, any data, it doesn't matter how you cut it. Our frontline workers took the brunt of, of the challenges that we had here. But I'd also suggest that if we think strategically about who we're trying to, to cater to here and who we're trying to solve for here, the folks that are represented by our service unions and, and builders and things like that, they, they work oftentimes for the larger employers in our area, right? So if you think about the custodial staff at Great Wolf Lodge, for example, or you think about the custodial staff at the Mall of America, if you think about the hospitality workers at the Marriott and things like that, they're working for large employers. So they're working for contractors who are fairly large, who are contracted to them. My, my biggest challenge with this ordinance has been, and I've been consistent on this, is that I think the number is too low, where we are, we are forcing folks to offer paid leave, to, to, not, not unpaid, but paid leave to folks that are on the cusp of like any major change, shift in these numbers can cause them to have to reconsider whether or not they can keep the lights on in their business. And while I'd argue, and, you know, we can have this over a beer sometime, you know, the, the notion of, of whether or not, you know, those things are things that should go into the budget and make a decision about whether or not you can operate a business paying people a living wage and giving them the benefits they deserve, et cetera, that's another thing. We're in the situation that we're in right now. And so when I think about, and, and I'll add to this, that for the 14 or 17 other states, only New York has a number lower than the state of Minnesota. In Connecticut, it's 50. In Massachusetts, it's 11. In Oregon, it's 10. In Arizona, it's 15. In Rhode Island, it's 18. And in Maryland, it's 15. So you can tell by the statutes across the country that there's this, you know, kind of line of concern for the small businesses, who, who I don't think are being represented by the service worker unions and other folks that are here, because they're not employed by those people necessarily, right? Now, I, I'm making assumptions there, but I think if we give the folks, those 500 folks, the time to talk to us about what would be meaningful for them, can they do unpaid versus paid, for example? You know, the, if the goal is to guarantee people cannot get fired for not showing up to work because they've been abused in a relationship and have to, have to shift locations quickly. If that's what we're trying to accomplish, we can do that without necessarily enforcing a major economic burden on small business. So that's, that's kind of where I land, and that's why I think we could have that conversation, and I think we would get some good, good feedback from it. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I was kind of hesitating talking, because I've run out of water and I have a very dry throat right now. So, you know, I want to say, of course, I'm very, very supportive of this policy, but I don't think that's what we're arguing about right now, or what we're debating right now. It's more around engaging small businesses in conversations in the timeline and the impacts of that. And in general, I'm definitely supportive of extending the timelines so that we can have those conversations. And then I also think we need to be open to the fact that there might be others that want to also provide more feedback. There might be people who work at small businesses that would be directly impacted, who would have something to say as well. And so even for the small business owners or the Mall of America, it would be great if you were willing to help and you wanted to go out with clipboards and ask people who are working in stores and restaurants what their opinions are. I mean, I think that if we're going to be getting more feedback from those who are most impacted, I just, I also don't think that we've talked to enough workers who are going to be impacted. And then other, I mean, I have other ideas too. This was a priority coming out of the Racial Equity Steering Committee. It was one of the big dream ideas. And we could go back and ask them for their input too. But again, this goes back to Councilmember Coulter's point of whether we're looking for substantial feedback, or we're looking for, you know, clarity on technical pieces or feedback on technical pieces. And so I just think that the, I, I totally hear the concern about small businesses, and I want to support those conversations. I also think that we could continue to ask for feedback over and over and over again in a city of 90,000 people with hundreds of businesses and different, different types of sectors and stakeholders. So that's my opinion. Again, very, very supportive of the policy. I think we desperately needed in Bloomington, especially with what we saw happen during the pandemic, both in terms of sickness and disease, but also the significant increase that we saw in domestic violence. And it's a, it's a really significant way that we can support people living in those situations. And so I don't want to kick this ball down the road too far, but again, I'm comfortable with a, a short delay if necessary.
I, I think the, I mean, the most important point you made there, I don't think there's disagreement about the importance of this and, and the need for this type of thing. But I think, I mean, for me, it's, it's the comfort in making sure that the folks that are going to be impacted by it, first of all, understand it. And secondly, feel like they have at least had input and buy-in in terms of how it's all going to work. And again, I don't believe that our largest group of employers and employees at the mall, at the mall, not the mall itself, but at the mall, have had that opportunity. And I think we need to afford them that opportunity personally. Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for clarifying what I actually meant. You said it much clearer than I did. That's what I meant. So thank you for saying that, because certainly I don't, don't mean just the mall itself. I, I do think there is an opportunity, I agree with Councilmember Carter, that this would be an opportunity to have additional folks weigh in. Again, I, I'm just personally stuck on that, that April 1st date. I just think that, you know, we let off this presentation talking about how this is a health crisis, and, and it may not be possible to meet that, that April 1st date. But I think that we ought to, as you said, Mayor, really try to ask our, our staff to try to put some extra emphasis in that. I, I agree with Councilmember Coulter. You know, it's frustrating, because, you know, we've been trying to move this thing along for so long. And so to even see another, another delay, I, we just, I just get concerned about that. And so I just hope that we would do everything possible to try to get this done as quickly as possible. And so that, that would be what I would ask if we were going to postpone this, that we stick with that April 1st date of 2023 and then move that date as it becomes necessary. But we try to do everything possible to try to meet, meet that date. Because I think it's important for our employees who are going to be impacted by this, they've been waiting long enough, so.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
I would like to think if, maybe we could find a, I don't know if this is possible or not, but maybe there's a compromise here, which is, you know, are there aspects of the ordinance that are some of those specific details? For example, that we can carve out of this for now and pass something at the macro level, right, that, that puts it in place and gets that timer going, if you will, and then have these discussions to try to bring back the, you know, and clarify on some of the specifics? Is there any way we could do that? You know, to the earlier commoners' points, it's 14 pages. If we skipped one or two right now, we would subsequently still get it across the line, right? You know, is that, is that something that we have on the table that we could do to, you know, kind of try to find a common ground here? Because I, I agree completely, nobody at this table wants this to not be implemented. We already know that. So if we're just talking about the specific, you know, technical pieces of this, can they be carved out of what we passed tonight and then inserted at some point when we have the clarity that we need from the folks who still need to weigh in?
And I would turn to staff and ask the, the steps that they would be looking at for that year. And I think if I understood it, it was a matter of hiring staff necessary, putting together the plan to, to do the education and outreach as it pertains to the, not just the proposal, but the adopted ordinance, and then actually doing that outreach and engagement. Am I understanding that, understanding that correctly? And then to Councilmember DeLisandro's point, can we short-circuit that at all? Can we, even if we delayed, I think we run the risk, I was going to say delayed, if we, if we fast-forwarded the hiring and delayed implementation, but then if we don't do implementation, we have issues?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, just, just to give you a sense here, Duluth had an 18-month implementation from time of adoption to effective date. St. Paul had a 15-month period. Minneapolis was a 13-month period. If we stick with April 1st and we're going to delay the adoption, we're looking at, best case, 11 months, but probably more like 10. And I feel really strongly, we need, we need a year on this. If we do defer a decision this evening and bring back adoption, I would recommend that we do something in the order of May 23rd or June 6th. And what we can do at that time, because I would agree with Councilmember DeLisandro, I, you know, I think I've been doing this long enough to figure out where everybody's going to land on this, right? So I think we know where we're going, that at that time, we can be prepared to come back and also have actions for the council related to budget amendment and authorizing us to move forward on the other pieces necessary to move ahead, so that we can get the ball rolling. But if we do delay, I, you know, in the same sense that a couple of weeks for getting additional input from businesses, I think a three-month delay on implementation isn't going to be the end of the world either, and, and would really want to see us try to maintain a, at least a one-year implementation. That's a strong preference from staff.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I guess I would return to sort of the previous question I asked, which is what, I mean, it's still not clear to me, I'm, yes, I'm all for greater feedback, I'm all for information, but my question is, to what end? Are we looking at, are we going to consider substantive changes to the ordinance? Or is this, is it strictly about, you know, the technical, the, the implementation, the tracking, the, the sort of the nuts and bolts of how this works? Because, you know, we, I mean, we've been talking about, yes, we all agree, you know, if, if we need to move forward, you know, there shouldn't be a significant delay. And what I'm struggling with is, if we can get this information in six weeks, well, you know, why could we not adopt the ordinance tonight and come back in six weeks or six months and make those technical changes to address issues brought up by businesses within the Mall of America and whoever else, workers and, and anyone else we want to hear from? That's the part that, that I'm struggling with here. Because if we are going to go in and reexamine the actual policy, the actual, you know, who has to do what, when, to whom and how, that's a different conversation. But if we're talking about, if we really, and it sure sounds to me like that's what we are talking about, that we're talking strictly about implementation and, and how this all moves forward and making sure it works for, you know, as best as possible for businesses of varying size, I, I just don't see why that would preclude adopting the ordinance tonight with the understanding, and we could even specifically give staff direction. We have done that before on ordinances, given staff direction to come back and say, you know, in six weeks, in three months, whatever we want to do, to say, this is what we've heard from businesses, this is, you know, these are the sort of the technical changes, the language changes, the wordsmithing, whatever it is we want to do to, so that it will work better from, for them. And that would allow, that would allow us to move forward, that would allow business, allow businesses to have some assurance that their voice will be heard in the implementation and, and all of that. And it would allow staff to move forward, you know, in the timeframe that we had previously discussed, to, to, to put this into place, such that April 1st of next year, this, this law goes on the books. So that's, that's the piece that I'm kind of struggling with right now, is, you know, if, if we, are we talking about more substantive changes, or are we talking about technical changes? Because I, it just doesn't seem to me like that, that a delay even of, of the delay in actually adopting the ordinance, to me, doesn't seem necessary if we're strictly talking about technical changes.
Appreciate that, Councilmember Coulter. But let me ask you, to Councilmember DeLisandro's earlier comments, would a change from a minimum of six employees to 20 employees, is that substantive? Or is that, is that nuts and bolts, technical stuff?
So to, to my mind, that would be more substantive, because that, that is, that to me is changing the, the overall effect that the ordinance has, as opposed to technical implementation, which is more about how, how it works on the ground level, rather than the overall effect and intent of the ordinance.
All right. Because I, okay. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I, I as well, a little bit frustrated with the potential for delay, because it feels like every time project, big or small, something comes along, there's always going to be somebody, Councilmember Carter, you kind of mentioned this, there's always going to be somebody that didn't feel like they got asked the question. And I am, I am confident in the work of the task force, and I, I do think there's an exception to be made when, obviously, a massive contingent of our small business community, assuming this is representative, said, "We would love to take a look at this." I am pretty confident I am going to vote to pass this as it sits here right now, based on the work of the task force, based off the research I've done, the conversations I've had with business owners and workers. But if this goes out one more time to say, "Here's the work of the task force, we want your feedback on this specifically and how it would impact you." I can't imagine I'm going to have my mind completely rocked by the feedback we're going to get on it, but I also don't know that I won't, or what portion of this policy that may pop up in. So yeah, it's, it's a bummer, we're going to have to delay it. And, and as I mentioned before, would really love to leverage this to say, "How are we not kicking cans down the road on stuff like this?" But, but yeah, the feedback would be appreciated. I'm guessing this is what we're going to be looking at, but I don't know what I don't know.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the city manager's suggestion to bring it back with, at the same time as the budget, which we're going to have to do anyways. And that would be in the future, and we couldn't hire until then anyways. So I don't know that delaying it and doing those simultaneously is any different than acting on it tonight ultimately, unless the city manager sees it differently. I thought that was frankly a positive suggestion, since that's a step we have to take anyways before they can get into the hiring process and move that forward.
So council, I, I, given our, our discussion here, given the, I mean, but let's see if we, we have a decision here one way or another. I mean, I, I would move that we, we direct staff to continue this until June 6th, ask them to, to continue to work with our small business community, specifically the small businesses at the Mall of America, in terms of listening and feedback, and, and then bring, ultimately prepare for budgetary impacts at that time, when we, when we discuss it again in, in early June. Second. So we have a motion and a second by Councilmember Loman. Councilmember DeLisandro?
Just a quick clarification question, if you don't mind, on the topic of the budget. So I thought, and maybe I misunderstood this, that this was in the 2022 budget? Because we talked about staffing for the number of ordinances, including the enforcement on tobacco and the enforcement on, on conversion therapy, and this one kind of lumped together. Now, I could be misremembering that, because I don't know that that was during my time on council, or if I was just paying attention as a resident. So if I could get some clarification on what we're specifically talking about, that'd be great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember DeLisandro, in the final budget for 2022, we pulled back the recommendations regarding staff for these compliance issues with the idea that we would wait until council had actually acted to approve them, and that if, if the council moved ahead, that for first-year costs, we would likely utilize Strategic Priorities Fund to absorb that cost, so that we didn't have to go back and make some other sort of budget make some other sort of budget cut or, or offsetting reduction. So the strategic priorities is, that fund has been there for a long time. I would, I would argue that it is set up for these types of purposes, that, you know, the council's identified this as something that's consistent with their strategic goals, and to use it as a half-year or one-year bridge to get to the next budget process makes a lot of sense. What I would also say is, we'd want to probably only hold it to that half-year or one-year, because our CFO really doesn't like to use a Strategic Priorities Fund to fund ongoing obligations. So that's how we would look to, to resolve the, the budget issue.
Okay, so, excuse me, just for clarification, so it's funded in the sense that it's, it, the, 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 we've, we could, we could hire as soon as everybody agrees that we're ready to do that, and we have money to pay for it, it's just the line item from which that, those dollars are coming, and it would move from strategic priorities to operating?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, that's a, that's a good summation.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I mean, I hate to keep harping on this, but I, I really would like some clarity around what, to what end will this engagement be conducted? What is, what, what information, what potential effect could this have, could it have on the ordinance that, that is being proposed here? Because it's, it's not clear to me at all what, what the goal is.
May I, may I try, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
So here's, here's what I think that we're hearing at staff level, and, and I would actually suggest a little bit more work than what has been discussed here, only because I don't want to leave other businesses that may not reside at the Mall of America out of this additional step of engagement. So I think that if, if Mall of America is, is comfortable having us at the tenants' meeting, I think that is a wonderful opportunity for engagement. And frankly, I would, I would say that there are two discussion points to have with them there. One is that we'd, we'd want to get some feedback on the nuts and bolts of the ordinance and understand how it's going to impact them. And yes, that probably includes some of the substantive issues. I also want to be clear with the council that around the substantive issues, the working group was, I think, pretty adamant, and, and staff is, is quite adamant, that we want to try to have conformity with the surrounding ordinances, just especially because Minneapolis, frankly, has already been challenged in the court of law, and is, you know, hewing closely to that is, I think, makes good sense. Okay? So we'll want to get some feedback on the substantive issues, and then the council can decide if the feedback that we get is, you know, something that you do want to make changes. The, the second piece that I would suggest is trying to get input from the businesses that if we do move ahead with this, what it is that they're going to need in, in terms of assistance and additional information to help during that transition process, rather than assume that we know the answer to that. And I think that that's always helpful when we do outreach is, is, rather than assume that we know what they need, is to ask them specifically what, what they need. And, and frankly, that will allow our transition time to move more efficiently if we're hearing directly from them that this is exactly the information we needed. And, and again, going back to the comments I made earlier about the implementation time period, one of the things that we really need to be sensitive to here is the, the lead time that businesses frankly are going to need, I think, and it's not just so that they can amend their administrative function, but it's just being able to plan for these types of meetings, you know, the, to the point that Mall of America sets their tenant meetings months in advance, as so folks can schedule around in order to attend those. One of the issues that we ran into last year when we were trying to recruit small business participation on the working group, was frankly, the ability to commit to the time necessary away from their business. And so making sure that we have lead time for folks to understand when, when they will be consulted with, or when those assistance, information sessions are going to be held, we need to be able to plan those quite a ways out into the future. And then the, the last comment I made, you know, the more work for staff, is that in addition to working with the mall to get in front of their tenants, is also trying to figure out how we do just one more attempt at engagement with other businesses around the community. Because as we know, you know, the chamber represents maybe about 15% to 20% of businesses at best. And, you know, the chamber was a good partner with us on this, they included information in their chamber newsletter about this, we utilized emails to notify businesses, that was really successful during the pandemic, when businesses were crying for assistance and they really needed the help. When something like this comes along in an email notification, it probably isn't a top of mind priority, which may explain a lot of the reason why we get less engagement, right? But now that we know we have an, an ordinance that is pending in front of them, and I think with the additional urgency that, that we've heard from some of the business community, we'll probably get a little bit more response utilizing that outreach method one more time.
And if I could add to Councilmember Carter's point, not only businesses, when we're talking businesses, we mean, of course, business owners as well as employees, correct?
We, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, we've had a even more difficult time getting access to employees, right? And so the, that was one place where some of our working group members were helpful in that they, they did have a better conduit to employees, but that's, that's tough for us to identify where those, you know, how we get in contact with employees, because we just don't have that contact information. And so that's one thing that we'll have to try to figure out, how do we do that? And if you remember in the engagement report that was provided to the council, a couple points along in the process, even when we saw relatively low participation, it was higher participation by businesses and lower by, you know, employees, just because it's, it's hard to get their attention on this. So we, we will make the effort.
Councilmember Dalisandro and then Councilmember Coulter. Councilmember Dalisandro?
So to that end, this is, I spent an afternoon and talked to every business that was open on Penn Lake, at the, at the plaza there, and had conversations about earned sick and safe leave, had conversations about other things. Get out of the building and go talk to these people where they're at, and I imagine you'll get more information. So I don't, you know, asking them to come to a meeting when we know that they can't walk away from their business is kind of just guaranteeing that they don't participate. But it doesn't take very much to go to the mall and sit at the, at the, the, you know, what am I trying to say, the, yeah, the rotunda, and ask, as people come by in their uniforms, or people come by in their, in their, you know, to and from their, their places of business, or they're sitting and having lunch at the cafeteria or whatever, you know, to have conversations with people. I do it for my work all the time, and it's effective, it's qualitative more than quantitative, and I get that, but it is data, and it's real data, and it's not hard to get, but it does mean that the people who are collecting it need to be where their people are, as opposed to just sitting around and expecting them to come to us, right? I say that only because we know that the, that the participation will be lower if we try to keep doing it the way we've been doing it. So I'm asking us to consider creative ways to go get that information, and I'm actually happy to volunteer. If you hand me a spreadsheet and a, and a clipboard, I will make, I will absolutely join the cause. I will. Thanks.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I have done a lot of talking tonight, and I, I recognize that I have let my motion, emotions carry me away a little bit tonight, and I, I apologize for that. A few thoughts on this, I would, I, I would say it is absolutely imperative. I, I think it is not optional, that to the extent that we seek out feedback from, from the tenants, from the business owners at the mall, that we are getting, doing as much as we can to get feedback from the workers as well. I, that to me is just simply not optional. I would also add, to be frank, in my dealings in four and a half years on the city council, it has not been, it has not been a challenge to get in touch with the Mall of America, and they have not had a challenge getting in touch with me. And when it comes to other priorities that the Mall of America and 515 have had, they have been, they have been willing to engage the city. And I, I am not going to question motives, I am not going to ask, I'm not going to specifically ask why, but it is disappointing to me that, for whatever reason, in all of the dealings that the Mall of America has with the city of Bloomington, that there were folks just finding out about this last week. And, and I, absolutely, as I said before, that is, that represents a, a problem on the city's end, but I, it is, it is, there is shared responsibility there, and I think we need to be clear about that. I would, I would say to, you know, again, to the point that I've made before, whether it's substantive or technical, one of the reasons, for example, on the, on the cutoff for paid versus unpaid leave, one of the reasons we have that particular number is because that is the number that's in Minneapolis's ordinance. And one of the things that we've heard from businesses is the need for consistency. And you know I don't believe in consistency for its own sake, but I think in that particular case, it does make a difference. And so that's why I'm wary of taking on more substantive changes to this ordinance. I will just simply end by saying, as I have said before, I don't believe this is necessary. I believe the feedback that we could get, to the, to that end, we could easily get by adopting this ordinance tonight and coming back with technical revisions in a matter of months. So I, I will be voting no on this motion.
Councilmember Dalisandro?
Do you mind if I address Councilmember Nelson, or Councilmember Coulter directly? I apologize, I don't mean to, you know, mess with decorum here or anything, but I, I do want to address something. I, I just want to let you know that if, if we could have agreed to a higher number on that, I would have voted to pass this ordinance tonight. I'm just letting you know. So I think that, like, I think that we are very, very close, is my point. And I think that if, if, because I think in the small amount of time I got feedback today, even from the folks that were, that I spoke to at the mall, those were some of the issues, right? They're, they're not, I don't think that's a big issue. And, and consistency with, 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 at least in my understanding, the consistent thing, consistency with Minneapolis is kind of irrelevant at the mall, because most of those retailers at the mall aren't also in Minneapolis. And so maybe to them, that doesn't matter. So I, I throw out to you that I, I think we're closer than we think we are, and I think if we could, we, we have choices we could make right now that would move this thing forward, or we could choose to, to go and get certainty on that information. And either way, I would be satisfied. Thanks.
We've got a count, we have a, a motion and a second on the floor, and the motion, just to remember, is to continue this to June 6th, to direct staff to do additional engagement and prepare supporting budget documentation. Was there anything I missed in that?
Mr. Mayor, I think that's how we understood it, if council is comfortable with that direction.
So I, I made the motion, Councilmember Loman made the second. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries 6-1, with Councilmember Coulter in the negative. Thank you for the discussion, and I do think ultimately, we're, we're, I think unified in the ultimate goal, it's just a matter of the, the details and, and what exactly we have when we get there, and to ensure that all of the, as many of the stakeholders who are going to be affected by this have been informed and are, are ready to move forward with it. So thank you for the discussion on that.
Mayor, just a quick question about the, the agenda itself.
Councilmember Loman.
Do we think we have enough time to, to get through these other issues here?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Loman, I would say that we do for the, for the traffic calming issue that is up next, I feel, okay, now I, now I know who it is that's hung with us this long into the night. And I, you know, I feel badly for our planner, Sean James, this always seems to happen to him, is that his items always seem to get kicked to a subsequent meeting. But I would say, let's handle the traffic calming and then see where we're at.
Very good.
Do you want to make a motion on those other two items?
So why don't we enable, in order to meet our, meet our 11 o'clock time limit here, why don't we, I'm going to make a motion to, to lay over the, the public hearing on the residential livability ordinance, and, and the, the annual miscellaneous issues ordinances. I lay that, lay those two things over until?
Mr. Mayor, I believe the city attorney will probably want us to open and continue both of those public hearings.
Open and continue, of course, we will do that, so we don't have to re, okay.
Yeah. And so maybe, just to keep it clean here, since those are following, if, if you just want to indicate your interest in doing that, and then we'll handle those separately.
I think that is what we will do.
When we conclude the traffic calming.
We will. All right. We will do that. We will move back in our agenda, item 4.1, a public hearing on Louisiana Avenue Traffic Calming Project. I will say, folks, I do recall an instance where we went until literally 3:00 in the morning, and then the person sitting there waiting for an item, we continued it till the next meeting, and I thought he was going to kill all of us, so. So we will not do that. We will move forward with this item, because we wouldn't do that to you, trust me. So, good evening, Mr. Jarvis.
Hi, Mayor, councilmembers, good evening. As you said, my name is Paul Jarvis, I'm the traffic management coordinator. I work under Kurt Roberts, name in Rome in engineering. Tonight I bring forward the Louisiana Traffic Calming Project, which is, I'm happy to bring forward, in my 16 years of doing this program, this is the first time we've got the, a project to move this far into the approval process. We can look at how we go about the traffic calming and traffic, we have a few different programs within the city. We used, one is the local traffic program, which we're here for tonight, others, we do some PMP look-aheads, and others, we have some staff-generated programs that kind of do the same thing. This program is a completely resident-driven program, there's an application process, the neighborhood Louisiana residents apply via application process, and ultimately, they'll be assessed for a portion of the construction. This is kind of the process and timeline, I'll run through it pretty quickly, I'll be going through most of these other slides. We've gone through data gathering and some trials, we did two trials during last summer. Sent out an opinion survey to the entire neighborhood, and we also did the petition and waiver forms to the 14 benefiting properties. And we're working through the council approval process right now, and if everything goes well, we're, we're working towards construction sometime in the summer of 2022. Looking at the area map, here's Louisiana Avenue bounded by Olchak beyond the south and 106th Street on the north, Busch Lake West Road is on the west, and Hampshire Avenue is on the east. The, how the area usage, blue is primarily residential neighborhood, the green comes out as a, is an apartment building complex, the red is commercial industrial area to the east, and the purple areas are governmental park and the city's western maintenance facility. This is kind of the overall area for what we advertise for, for what we consider the neighborhood, in red is the 14 benefiting properties that applied for the application. During the process, in their application, the residents wanted to try speed tables, so during the summer, we, staff put together a program of, we put out three temporary speed tables, and during that process, we do the data gathering. The deliverables for all these type of little projects is always volumes and vehicle speeds, that's what we're kind of looking for. The before data, the before data for the Louisiana showed about 600 cars per day, and this average speeds were about 30. During the first speed trial, which is very effective on reducing speeds, the average speed was reduced to 15 for the entire corridor, and we, we had a little bit of loss in vehicle volumes as well. During, while the, while the trial was in place, we decided to do a public open house and invite the entire neighborhood to gather feedback and talk about maybe other solutions. The second solution, we had, traffic, traffic engineering and also street maintenance came up with a slightly different solution that may accomplish the same goals as the speed tables. So we moved on to a second device trial, which was basically staff-generated, of looking at putting a median at the north intersection of Olchak beyond Louisiana, the north segment. And we put out, if you can see the picture there, we put out some rubber curbing with some signage, we accomplished a right-in, right-out with some turn restrictions. They, the vehicle data stayed the same, and if you look at the, during the trial that data for the ADTs, we had a very big reduction, 400 cars a day, and a, and a modest reduction in the speeds. And after all those were done, we put out a, this past fall, we put out an opinion survey, we kind of looked at the question one and question four. The, the question one, do you think there's a safety, safety concern along Louisiana Avenue? And 57% of the entire neighborhood agreed that there was. And question four is where we're kind of dwelling down to what we're, what our next step is going to be. What would you like to see installed permanently? Speed tables, 20%, median, 37%, and leave, leave as is, was 43%. So we didn't have a 50%, so we kind of looked at 57% wanted something done, and it kind of correlated. So we kind of looked at 57% wanted something done, and it kind of correlates to question one, which was 57% of the people agreed there was a problem. So we decided to move forward with the speed, or the median and the turn restrictions. Part of the petition, part of the program is petition waiver. So 67% of the benefiting properties have to agree to be assessed. And so we sent out all 14. We didn't, we did get back 10, which was 71%, which is enough to move the process forward. Here are our next steps, is the council meetings tonight. And we're looking at council meeting on April 25th to accept the feasibility report and petition of waivers. And if you look it down, I have something on the future, where it'd be revised local street traffic calling policy and local assessment policy. This policy is since 2005. How we go about talking to the neighborhoods, how we go about assessing has changed since 2005. So we need to make some changes soon on the program going forward. That's my bridge version, quick.
Thank you, Mr. Jarvis. Council questions? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just trying to get my head around, so there's the petition, and if, if I understand correctly, there was 71% support for being assessed for that. But then in the broader survey, there were, I think, 43% supported just leaving everything as it was.
Yeah.
Can you help me reconcile that? Obviously, different population sets and, and?
Yep, the survey went out to the entire neighborhood, Councilmember Nelson. And the 10 of the 14 is just the people that applied for the traffic calming. How we rectify that is, we didn't really have a overwhelming support one way or the other against, if we would had 60%, we probably would have to rethink that, how the rest of the neighborhood would have not wanted that.
Okay. So, and then I'd be correct in understanding that 20% wanted the speed tables, 37% wanted the median turn restrictions, so 57% wanted?
Wanted something.
Something done. Okay. Thank you.
Council additional? Councilmember Nelson has one additional question.
Just trying to be polite. So was there any discussion or consideration of other options? I think we talked about this previously when this was before the council, that on Normandale, there are restricted hours on turn lanes. And that's a county road, so you can't take a left-hand turn into some of the neighborhoods off of, to the west of Normandale. Was there any consideration of something like that? And to that point, with the, in terms of the traffic reduction, do we know the day parts that that reduction came in? Because I think from talking to residents in that area, a lot of it is a concern about morning commuters going to the industrial area to the northeast of Louisiana. So it would be morning commute traffic and then evening leaving as well. And so I'm just wondering if there's, because I did see some concerns from some people about losing that left-hand turn for the neighborhood and if there's a more balanced approach, I guess.
Yeah, Councilmember Nelson, we look at that in three E's. We have engineering, education, enforcement. And with the just signage turn restrictions, it goes away from engineering to enforcement. So we've had, we have these turn restrictions in other places, and we end up having the PD spend an inordinate amount of time enforcing them. When an engineering solution, like a simple median, we don't need the enforcement part. Concrete works.
Council additional questions? I always knew that first E as, not engineering, but environment. That's the one I always?
There might be a fourth one for me.
I always thought the fourth one was engagement, but?
Festive.
Yeah, I know, I know. Council, any additional questions? If not, this is a public hearing, and I will now open the public hearing on item 4.1, which is a public hearing on the Louisiana Avenue Traffic Calming Project. Please, here in the council chambers, if you, you've made it this long, please come and? If you could identify yourself and sign in, and then?
Okay.
Have at it, please.
Really want the email address right now, too?
No, you can finish it after, you, you can?
Thank you.
That's good. We're good.
All right. So my name is Gary Garren, and I live on Garden Circle, which is the second cul-de-sac up Louisiana from Old Chalkape Road. So, good evening, Mr. Mayor, managers and council members. Appreciate the opportunity to be before you tonight. And I also want to thank the staff, Paul, Amy, Kirk, for working with us through this process. You know, obviously a brand-new process to us, so, you know, they, they've just been excellent communicators with us, so that was, that's been really beneficial. And also thanks to the city for having this traffic management program available to residents. It's a, it's a good tool. Real quick, I've been a resident since 1987, on Garden Circle, on Louisiana Avenue. There had been significant safety issues develop since that time. The amount of traffic and the speeds of the traffic have changed drastically since I first moved in in 1987. As far as the timeline, this, this thing, this process has been a long time for the residents. We started the dialogue in 2018 with the city, with staff. Speeds and volume testing. Part of the testing is 85% speed, 35 miles per hour. What that means is 15% of the traffic exceeds that speed of 35 miles per hour. And in this case, 600 cars a day, that's 90 cars a day exceeding 35 miles an hour up and down Louisiana Avenue, day in, day out. City said that they would request periodic policing. None. We know why. It's not a high-level priority, right? It is to the residents, but it's not to the police department. They put out radar signs, has an impact for about a week, and it's, everything's back to status quo. You know, yeah, we got delayed by COVID. Then we worked through some other things, and then we started in 2021 actively working with, with staff and to move this forward. Since 1986, the expansion of Old Chalkape Corridor and the industrialization of our community all around our neighborhood has been intense and has grossly impacted our livability. We have now, wasn't there before, a huge apartment complex, as you saw on the overhead. Hennepin County has expanded Old Chalkape Road to a four-lane, what I call a major highway, posted at 45, but mostly at 50. So when people come off of Old Chalkape Road, the vast majority throughout most of the day are going to points north and west, which is to the industrial park. Why? They don't want to wait at red lights at Hampshire Avenue or at Bush Lake Road. But they can come at 45 miles an hour, they can make a quick left-hand turn and hit it and go up the hill on Louisiana Avenue. And it goes on all day, including the weekends, because there's, most of the cars going up that way are to points west of Louisiana along 106th. So as far as policing, signage, that doesn't work. I did ask the police department, because after, in, in 218, yeah, we'll do policing, okay? I asked for a police report in September of 2020. Zero citations have been issued since January of 2018 on Louisiana Avenue for speeding. So, and it's not like we haven't complained. So our proposed remedies were eliminate the left-hand turn lane on Old Chalkape Road, fill it in with concrete, dirt and trees. Okay? Nobody can make a left. It doesn't impact Louisiana Avenue coming or going. But it would impact where the vast majority of the traffic comes from and where they're going to, and they don't have a real concern for the neighborhood. Then we tried the speed tables, and we ended up with the right-in, right-out, which really worked well. 67% reduction in volume and speeding events are reduced by association. So? Yep.
Your time is up.
Okay, so I just wanted to say thank you. We appealed to the council to pass this resolution 2022, and we look forward to any further discussions two weeks from tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. Really appreciate all the time that you spend here. I mean, this is, this is quite a commitment. So my name is Nate Erickson. I'm on Garden Circle. I'm not right on Louisiana, but I certainly spent a lot of time walking up and down the street, out to the park, to the Highland Park Reserve and whatnot. And I've always noticed the speed of cars coming down Louisiana. We've got a lot of little kids running around. And that was always something that just really shook me, like, wow, this is, this is a neighborhood street. And we have people flying in, it seems like 35 miles an hour, even, you know, probably some even more than that. So, you know, most neighborhood streets in that area are off the beaten path, they're not right off Old Chalkape. So it's kind of a unique challenge that we have. And, you know, with, with the various, the various tactics that the, that the city staff has, has implemented, as I greatly appreciated. I thought the, the speed bumps were probably more of an annoyance, and I don't think, I think the, the value was more reducing the traffic. And, you know, having the right-in, right-out actually did that the most. I mean, it was 600 down to 200 cars. I mean, that was, that's a huge, huge improvement. So with, and I think most of the people here are also, I mean, they're the stakeholders that are actually paying for it, and then they're also the ones that are really benefiting the most from it. So there's a lot of accountability here. Everybody's, I think we got a pretty strong turnout here. So I'm here to, to support the motion, and I really appreciate you considering this tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson.
Good evening. My name's Tim Zweers. I live 10717 Louisiana Avenue, right on the street there. I have three kids. I have an 11-year-old, an eight-year-old and a six-year-old. Normally, I have a Monday meeting that I go to, different than this, so they assumed I was going there tonight. And I told them I was coming here instead, and they asked why, and I said, talk about the traffic. All three opened their mouth at the same time to tell me a story about them almost getting hit on their bikes. So it's important. It's hugely important to us. 400 cars less a day is significant. My eight-year-old, when I did this, went to go put her shoes on so she could come and talk to you guys. I said, no, 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 not thinking it'd be 11 o'clock. You know? I said, no, you can't do that, but she wanted to come and talk to you. And she probably would have been more convincing than me, but it's hugely important. So you can see that by the turnout that we have, we want to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zweers.
Good evening.
Hi, thank you. My name is Linaeal Nguyen, and my husband and I live on Louisiana Avenue. And right next to us is a really nice park. It has a basketball court, sand volleyball court, a baseball diamond, and a really nice playground. They just updated it a couple of years ago. And the neighborhood kids love it. Kids in the apartment just behind us also love it. And there's just a lot of kids crossing the street to get to the, the park. There's no crosswalks or anything, residential street. So we would really appreciate, you know, a way to calm down the traffic, and this median seems to really have worked in the trials. So we would be part of the, the group paying for it, and we support it wholeheartedly. We don't have kids, but we have a dog who will sometimes just take off as well. So the amount of cars that just go zooming up and down the street really affect us as well. So that's something we would really appreciate you considering. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen.
Trying to double up here to? Hi, thanks for having me. I wrote a letter, it's in the packet, you guys can take some time to read it. But I've been a 20-year residence. My name is Lori Blomquist. I live on Louisiana. And the amount of kids crossing the street, obviously, you guys hear the story. It's not just that, it's just the manner in which people have been driving lately in the last few years. I'm sure, hope you have not seen that in your neighborhoods, but maybe you have. There's been confrontations from the neighbors with some of the drivers, and it's gotten really ugly. And it shouldn't be that way, but when people feel like there's no other option but to run into the street in front of a car that's speeding up in front of your house, many of us have done that. I have done that. So it would be, it would be beneficial to put the right-in, right-out and, and just make it a safer road. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you begin, just hold on one second. Counsel, I'm going to move that we extend our deadline to 11:15 to complete our business for this evening.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to extend our business till 11:15 so we can get our work done. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven, zero. So we're on until 11:15. Thank you for that. We can have, do a motion in a second during the public hearing. Come on. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Jennifer Blessie. I live at 10620 Daisy Circle, so I'm in one of the cul-de-sacs off of Louisiana Avenue. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers, for hearing us this evening in regards to this important topic that we feel is providing the safety of our community, of our children, of our pets that live there, and of course, of all of us that are there as well, too. Living on the corner of Daisy Circle and Louisiana Avenue, I hear the traffic zooming past my house, my home, where I am raising my family. When my husband and I were searching for our home nine years ago, we specifically chose to not purchase a home on a double yellow line for the fear of the safety that double yellow lines provide to communities. We purchased our home on Daisy Circle off of Louisiana Avenue, being that there were no double yellow lines, knowing that when we had children, a few years later, they would be safe in crossing the street to go play with their friends, to go to the park, to enjoy their neighborhood. And that as parents, we knew that they were also safe, and we weren't going to have to worry of the traffic driving on the road. In these nine years, as my neighbors have also said, and as Paul has also stated, the traffic has increased dramatically in nine years. Let that resonate for a minute. Nine years. That's not even a decade. It's sure close, but it has changed that much. We have had the threats because we are trying to protect our families, our community, our homes. I have to do my face ID. Got to get back into my phone. Shoot, I've got two minutes here. I do have two small children now, and they do go to their homes, or go to their friend's house across the street. As we do say, Louisiana Avenue has become the Indy 500. As we do say, Louisiana Avenue has become the Indy 500. That's not a nickname I want to have for our neighborhood. The speeds are endangering our safety. Louisiana Avenue was not built for this. Louisiana Avenue was built to access our homes in the four cul-de-sacs on Louisiana, those homes, and to the horseshoe that's right next to us. It was not to accommodate for the semi trucks that drive through, for these fast cars that drive through with their loud mufflers and their loud stereo systems that come rolling through all hours of the day and night. It wasn't built for that. When this development was created, that wasn't the intention of this street. It wasn't intended to help support the businesses, which is wonderful to have them there, but it wasn't intended to support that. That was the intention for the stoplights at Hampshire Hill, at Bush Lake Road. There is a purpose for that, and there's a safe way to access those communities or to access those businesses. It's not through Louisiana Avenue. I'm obviously very much in favor of creating some type of a system. And in all honesty, when the median and turn restriction was in place, it was drastic. It was night and day. Like Tim said, 400 cars, that is a serious difference. That is something we are in favor of. The right-in, the right-out, it is, it is a, a matter that, yes, we can handle that. We can do that. If we need to make a left-hand turn, which I do every day when I take my children to daycare, I go the appropriate way, and I go out to 106 and down to Hampshire Avenue, and I wait for my turn to safely get onto Old Shakopee at a stoplight. That is the safe way to access. Thank you so much, councilman. Thank you so much, mayor, for your time and consideration for this important project in our neighborhood and providing the safety for all of us.
Thank you. Anyone else in the council chambers? Riza, do we have anyone on the line who wishes to speak to item 4.1, Louisiana Avenue Traffic Calming Project?
No one is on the line. Please continue.
I'm sorry, there's no one on the line?
No one is on the line.
Okay, thank you. No one on the line? Last call for anybody in the chambers here? Counsel, seeing no one coming forward, I would look for a motion to close that public hearing.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Coulter and a second by Councilmember Nelson to close the public hearing on item 4.1. No further public, or no further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Counsel, I, I think we have had the discussion more than once for ways that we engage our neighborhoods and the entire community to work together to find ways to slow down traffic in our neighborhood. And I think we just have seen the A-plus example of how to do that. And I, Gary, good job. Well done. I think, however you got there, I think it's, it's a wonderful thing, and I think we, we've seen a great example of this. And I couldn't support this any more strongly than to move this forward. Also, agree completely with the staff recommendation to revise the traffic calming policy, to find ways to make it easier, more accessible, more logical, a shorter timeframe. It shouldn't take the, the number of years that this has taken to get done, and so we get to this result more frequently. So this isn't just a, a once-in-a-blue-moon type of thing, that we get to this, this point frequently, and we, we slow the traffic down in the neighborhoods. So I, I can't say enough about this. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, mayor. So I just want to thank you all for coming, and I want to thank you for your passion and your persistence and your patience, not just tonight, but for the past several years. And I'll keep my comments brief, because I know we're getting pretty late into the night. But just want to thank city staff, thank residents for working together, coming up with this solution. I totally agree. It's a very, it's a, it's a perfect example of what we could be doing across our city. I will say that we have talked at least twice over the past couple of years about revisiting our traffic calming policy. I know I've brought it up. And so we'd love if we could really, truly take some steps to do that. And, and then with that said, of course, I totally, fully support this project.
Councilmember DeLisandro, and then Councilmember Coulter. Councilmember DeLisandro.
I, I'm so excited that you all are here. Thank you for being patient with us. Really appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, one of the things I, I thought Ms. Nguyen said that I think is worth us putting a pin in and taking note of is that Louisiana Avenue is a crossing for a park where lots of kids go. As we think about our park's master plan, one of the things that Councilmember Carter and I've talked several times about is that we can't just think of the park. We have to think about the ways that people get to and from that park and making sure that that's safe and accessible across a number of lines. If this is a model for how that could be done, I think it would be worth noting that and kind of taking a broader look at it across that. I know Emerson Avenue at Bryant Park is a great example of, I mean, I've got, I get conversations about people, with people about it all the time. So, yeah, would love to see that. Thank you.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, mayor. As if you all haven't heard from me enough tonight. But I just want to also thank you all for, for coming out. We, you go to enough of these meetings, and you kind of get used to the, the sort of frequent flyers. But I, I really, I just want to say that I really appreciate it, that this is obviously not something that, that a lot of folks, a lot of you folks do frequently. And, and I certainly could tell it was outside of some comfort zones, which is an okay thing as well. But I just want to acknowledge that, and I, I think that really speaks to your, your passion and your dedication and, and your persistence. And I, I, again, just to echo other comments that folks have made, we, yes, we absolutely need to revise the local traffic calming policy. And I, I would go so far as to suggest to staff that we may get, we may get a more time certain about when that might happen in, in the not-too-distant future.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, mayor. I'll be very quick and brief. Again, thank you to everyone. Thank you to Gary in particular. I know you worked very hard on this over the years and, and really good result here. Also, thank you to staff, because I know that in speaking with Gary earlier, there was the, the traffic pumps or bumps, wherever they are, that was okay, maybe acceptable, but not preferred. And, you know, I know that working together, you guys came up with a solution that, that you believe is better, that I think will be better for your neighborhood. And so I think, to echo the mayor's comments, I think an A-plus effort on how this can work really well for a neighborhood. So thank you for your dedication to that. Thank you for taking the time to hang out with us until 11 o'clock at night. We're always this much fun every Monday night. So come back, please.
Counsel, I would look for action on item 4.1. Councilmember Lohman.
I haven't spoken on this, so maybe I'll move it so we can get out of here, huh?
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember DeLisandro to adopt a resolution authorizing the city engineer to prepare a feasibility report for the 2020, 2022 604 Louisiana Avenue Traffic Calming Project. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Well done. Thank you so very much. Counsel, I would, we were on to item 4.2 on our agenda, and I would make a motion to open the public hearing for item 4.2 on residential livability standards and hold it open, hold open the public hearing until April 25th, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Lohman to open the public hearing on 4-2 and hold open until April 25th, 2022. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. And counsel, I would make a motion to open all the public hearings for, on item 4.3 related to the annual miscellaneous issues ordinance, that, those are items A through M, and hold those open until the public hearings for these ordinances until May 9th, 2022.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, as stated on item 4.3. And no further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Item five is our organizational business, and item 5.1 is our policy and issue update. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I have a couple items I just want to update the council on. And so one is, I'm sure that some folks have noticed with curbside pickup that we did have some missed pickups over the, over the last week. So one thing I will say is that the number of missed pickups this year is not different than it has been in previous years. And so there isn't some sort of tremendous failing with the program. We, we did have an unfortunate situation where the, the missed pickup was called in. They committed to coming back and cleaning it up subsequently, and then did not follow through on that. Our staff is still working with them to identify why that happened, try and make sure it doesn't happen again in, in the remainder of the pickup schedule here. But consistent with our contract, there'll also be assigned liquidated damages. That's a fancy word for saying we're going to fine them for the fact that they didn't do the pickups. So if residents are wondering, you know, you know, why they can just get away with doing this, they don't get away with doing it. We have a, we have a schedule for liquidated damages when, when we have this sort of an occurrence. But the, you know, in the bigger scheme of things, I wanted to make sure that people know that program's operating smoothly again this year. We typically have some missed pickups. Our staff works really closely with the haulers, and usually that process works well. This year, it hasn't worked so well. So hopefully, the last couple of weeks, we'll make sure it does. Couple of weeks ago, council received public comment that was critical of the city for spending money on radio ads to try and get summer employment positions filled. I would share with the council that we did spend about $4,980. We advertised on two radio stations, Cool 108 and Hot 102.5. The reason we did that is because those two stations have demographic profiles of liftners that we were targeting as the ones most likely to result in getting us additional applicants for critical seasonal openings that we were not getting applicants for. And it was successful. We had 20 applicants as a result directly from those radio spots that we did, targeting parents of youth. Because guess what? Parents hear things on the radio, and they say, boy, I'd really like to get my kid out of the house and earning some money this summer, and the city of Bloomington is a fantastic way to do that. So in our minds, that was money that was very well spent. And there was some additional follow-up requested, again, on the shopping carts with Metro Transit. I had not had a chance to talk to our Met council representative, which is where I wanted to start. The resident who was concerned about it reached out directly, had some conversation with them already, facilitated by one of our council members. Thank you very much, Councilmember DeLisandro. But we will continue to have that conversation. We have a regular meeting with our Met council folks, and when we have that regular meeting, I will make sure that this issue is on the table for discussion.
Any questions of Mr. Verbrugge? Before we move on to, do you have a question for Mr.? Okay, please.
Yeah, thank you. And just for clarity on the liquidated damages part, that goes to the city? And, and what is it used for? It, it does not go to those residents that had the missed pickup and the inconvenience, correct?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson. No, there's no remuneration that goes to, did I say that right? Remuneration, remuneration? That goes to the residents whose garbage was not picked up. It, it goes into our solid waste fund. And so there's a benefit to the whole city. It's not specific to that resident.
Counsel, before we move on, I'm going to tell Riza we are done with our public hearings for this evening. Riza, thank you for sticking with us this late. You can have the rest of the night off. Thank you so very much.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you. I don't need to be to the airport till 4:30, so I'm going to take my time on this one. No, just, just real quick. Thank you very much for that explanation. I, I do want to give a shout out to our assistant city manager, who I was emailing over the weekend to, to get that address for those pickups were missed, and Laura Horner, who, who's been working with them moving forward. I, I think if, if it's possible, and I know it's kind of a squishy concept, but my worry is, especially when we saw folks coming forward saying, hey, it's a group of seniors. They used to come up and wheel these down the driveway. I was driving down 11th, and there was a couch a senior had, had put out, asked for help to get on the curb that couldn't have been a foot further away than it needed to be. But they tagged it and said, sorry, better luck next year, and then it rained all day. So my, my worry is, my guts kind of telling me we're starting to see a pattern of haulers not providing the basic customer service they may have used to when we were in a more flexible system, especially now that the city of Bloomington is handling customer service, and we're getting the angry calls. So I think moving forward, again, it's, it's just kind of my intuition. And if there is a way to keep track of those quality-of-life issues so we can have some conversations and put this in front of the haulers when it comes time for contract negotiation, I sure would appreciate that. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Martin, do appreciate that. With the curbside pickup, I think it's important to note that we've, we've contracted that to one hauler for the last number of years, right? So typically haven't, we haven't shared that in the last couple of years, right?
No, actually, that program is handled through our regular garbage.
Oh, it is, okay.
Program. So each of the haulers accounts for their own, their own pickups for that. I would note, we do keep track of the number and types of tags that are issued each year. And at least so far this year, the number of tags is roughly the same as it is in a typical year. We had expected it to go considerably higher because we had changes to the types of materials that were accepted. But frankly, I think people are abiding by the new rules quite well.
Counsel, anything else? Hearing nothing else? Counsel, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you much for your work tonight, gang. Thanks to everybody. This was a good meeting, a lot of good discussion here. Thank you very much. Have a good night.